Wednesday, March 19th, 2025. We are coming to you in a hybrid fashion. So in person, we currently have Kate Simindon and myself. I am the vice chair, but I am presiding as chair tonight because our chair, Anne Marie Mizola, is out of state for work, so she is joining us remotely. Also remotely, we have Dr. Joan Giblin and member David Hiltz will hopefully be here soon. He is coming from work. We actually had our call to order at 6:30 in executive session, but we are now moving into open session at 7:06. First order of business is if everybody in attendance could please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, so for the committee, we have approval of minutes. We have the open session business minutes from March 5th, and then we have three sets of executive session minutes, January 29th, February 12th, and February 25th. Happy to approve them as a batch or one by one if we need to. Any discussion or is there a motion?
Move to approve as a batch.
Thank you, Kate. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Anne Marie. Any discussion? Okay, I'll put it to a vote. Since we are hybrid, I do have to poll one by one. So Anne Marie?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, so those four sets of minutes do pass four to zero. Mr. Luff, do we have correspondence this evening?
We do, Madam Chair. We have one email from a parent in the community regarding the Latin program that I'll read now.
Okay.
This actually was two emails, one to the school committee and one to myself. I will read the one for me. It's the same content.
Okay.
Emily Kail. I apologize, Emily, if I'm not pronouncing your last name correctly.
Emily Kai.
Emily Kai, see, that's what I do. I apologize. She was not able to be here tonight, but she wanted to submit her comments in writing. As you and the school committee are committed to the school year 26 budget with the 6.7% increase to support the new programs at the middle school without the Latin program at high school, I continue to urge you to support the school committee's agreement to prioritize restoring the high school Latin teachers' position in school year 26 should funds become available. The World Language High School Department Chair, in her March 5th comments, indicated the program is rebuilding with closer to 50 students interested in Latin courses next year. The district's budget message for shifting the world language position to fifth grade focuses on efficiency and provides justification based on Latin enrollment figures and not the projected interest. This seems unfair. Further, the school committee acknowledged on March 5th that there has been no study of the district's world language program. What assessment of the middle school world language program was used to determine that a fifth-grade option strengthens the portrait of a Norwood graduate over Latin as a third world language option at the high school? Enrollment seems to be only one factor to consider as part of a robust program review. The broader picture of the Latin program, including the impact it has on student engagement, the demonstrated quality of instruction, and how it meets diverse needs of students, was clearly expressed on March 5th. This program has the support of the World Language Department and its teachers, as well as the support of parents, a broad community of educators, and especially has the support of students. Cautionary warnings have been made about Norwood likely not having the same level of free cash next year to cover rising or new costs. As the talk of an override is introduced, the Latin program, a priority for my eighth grader, will already be gone. There will be no opportunity to maintain or protect Latin if, when we have to vote to raise taxes for the Norwood public education system. For school year 27, I hope student needs continue to be at the center of your decisions, but how you will consider all student voices to better understand the impact of your choices. I understand that commitments have been made to make this new middle school program, the new middle school programs, reflect the financial investment in the new building. However, the justification of meeting this commitment at the expense of high school students and an academic program that makes our school system high-quality has not been sufficient. I express my continued appreciation for the difficult decisions you face and your hard work. On behalf of my children and the other students who spoke out on the issue, I ask you to keep them and Latin in mind tonight. Sincerely, Emily Kail.
Thank you, Mr. Luff.
Well said.
Okay. So at this time on the agenda is warrants. But Anne Marie, I didn't see any warrant in our packet. Did you have a report?
I do not believe my travel, I won't come back on time, so we will just do that next week.
Okay. So as long as the committee is okay, I'm going to make one slight adjustment to our agenda. Just to be respectful to everybody's time, we have a very brief appearance from one of our teachers that needs our approval for our field trip. That's right around the corner. So Superintendent Luff and I would like to pull Mr. Arans up first to come speak to us, and he is here to talk to us about the National DECA Field Trip request that is in our packet.
Thank you for having me.
Yeah, thank you for joining us this evening.
Well, I'm back. But again, thank you so much for having me here. First and foremost, what an amazing experience it was for all of us to go to state. We clinched in semifinals, and we were able to also not only have a fun moment there, but have two spots for the leadership positions at ICDC, which will be in Orlando, Florida. So I'm going to read what I have prepared here. After nearly three decades, Norwood High School's DECA chapter is making history again. Following an incredible return to the Massachusetts State Career Development Conference, we are beyond thrilled to announce that Norwood DECA has earned a place in the International Career Development Conference in Orlando, Florida. From April 25th through the April 30th, our students will travel to Orlando's Orange County Convention Center where they'll join over 22,000 of the world's top high school DECA competitors. They'll compete, they'll network, and showcase their talents in business, marketing, finance, hospitality, and management, proving that Norwood is back stronger than ever. None of this would have been possible without you. So again, thank you so much for giving me the time, and I'm looking to see if I can get the permission to take two students with me down to Florida.
Okay. Well, congratulations on your success.
Thank you.
At the last event, and thank you for leading the activity on behalf of our students. So you are requesting it's in our packet to take two students with you, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And the dates for that trip are April?
April 25th through April 30th.
Okay. And for the committee, we do have the field trip application in our packet, as well as additional insurance information that Mr. Luff added today. Mr. Luff, did you want to add anything at this time?
I'm just incredibly happy to hear that they made that and excited to, well, upon approval, that you have the opportunity to bring them. Sounds great.
Definitely. Thank you so much.
Are there any questions or discussion from the school committee on this field trip? Anne Marie?
Just just to tell you that that's where I am right now, that I'm looking at the Rosen class on Golden Mindo, and so congrats.
Thank you so much. I'm so excited. It's nice to be able to see. I've never been, so thank you for giving me a bird's eye view.
Okay. Any questions or discussion, or is there a motion to approve this field trip?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Kate. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Anne Marie. So again, I do have to poll since we're hybrid, so Anne Marie?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Donna, just sitting there for the minutes. David did join us. David, did you want to pause or do you want to approve the field trip?
Uh, yeah.
You'll approve it? Yes, okay. And I'm a yes as well. So Donna, that does pass five zero. So thank you and good luck.
Thank you so much.
Have a good trip.
Appreciate the time, and we will make sure to, we'll make sure to have all the students come in and have an opportunity to talk to them well.
That would be wonderful.
About the experience.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. So today's agenda is a little different than normal. It is our annual budget hearing, so I just want to go over for everybody in the room, on the school committee and in the community, what to expect. There are three policies in our policy manual that dictate how a policy, excuse me, budget hearing is going to go. Those are policies BEDH, BEDHE, and BEE. I made sure to review all of them before I came here because it's been a couple of years since I was the chair over a budget hearing, and I wanted to make sure we were doing this appropriately. So the first thing that will happen is I will need my committee to make a motion to officially start the budget hearing. Once we start it, we are going to turn it over to Mr. Luff and Mr. Mannion. They are going to give the official presentation on where we currently stand with the FY26 budget. Once we get that presentation, the school committee will have a chance to ask some questions, and then I will open it up to the public. Some of you signed up in advance, others of you signed up when you came. I will go in the order that you signed up. For any public comment, including the budget hearing, each person gets three minutes to speak to us. I will time you at the end of three minutes. If you're in mid-sentence, I will let you finish that sentence, but then I will need to ask you to pause your comments. If you have something prepared and it was more than three minutes, I ask you to give me the written statement either at the meeting or later on email to us because we do want to enter the full comment into our minutes, even if you did not have a chance to finish saying it within three minutes. With the budget hearing, there is no time limit for how long the hearing will be. Some of you spoke to us before at a public comment. At public comment, that maxes out at 30 minutes, but at budget hearing, we can go for however long people want to talk to us. But it is three minutes per person. If you have something to say beyond the three minutes, once everybody who has registered, once I ask if anybody else in the room wants to speak, if somebody who has spoken wants to speak again, you can come back up if I recognize you as chair for an additional three minutes. Just like with our public comment, this is not a time for discussion or debate between you and the school committee. However, what is different with a budget hearing is that if any of my colleagues or the administrators want to ask a clarifying question based off of a comment that we receive, we can ask you to clarify it, and then as chair, I will allow you to answer that up to an additional three minutes. So that is the process for the budget hearing. Lastly, once everybody speaks who wants to, then as a school committee, we will be able to discuss further, you know, how we feel about the budget. We are not doing our final vote on the FY26 budget tonight. That is next week. But what I think as a subcommittee, Mr. Luff and Mr. Mannion, what we really need tonight is direction from the committee if there's anything after our budget hearing that you want us to look into further and bring back next week. Is that clear for everybody? So at this time, if I could please have a motion to start our budget hearing?
So moved.
Thank you, Kate. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Anne Marie. So again, I'll poll individually. Anne Marie?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. So Donna, for the minutes, at 7:17, we will start our budget hearing, and Mr. Luff, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the community, I will open by starting to share my budget message and some key components of that, and then I'll hand it off to Mr. Mannion to kind of go through at least the beginning portion of the slide deck to discuss the overall pieces of the FY26 proposed budget. This is a $65,292,117 budget that represents a 6.7 increase over the Norwood Public Schools' FY25 budget. The major focus of this budget increases staffing by 6.6 positions added to last year's budget that will be allocated for the opening of the new Coakley Middle School. There are currently 570.7 full-time equivalent staff members in the district and additional 32.5 positions that we fund through grants and revolving accounts. There were a tremendous amount of considerations as we've gone through the budget, not just improvements, but also current structures and staffing to see if there were efficiencies or different ways we could continue to provide really good services but reduce in areas as we move forward. We have significant collaboration with the Budget Balancing Committee Commission, or BBC, who requested that we decrease our initial ask of 8.1% in the amount of 883,697, or 1.4% reduction from our preliminary budget. This budget has now gone through the Finance Commission as well, who, although they did not take a vote on the budget, I think we have full support of that commission, which is great. After our vote on the 26th, they will have their final meeting to make a final vote on the 27th of this month. So in this budget, as you've heard, there are some programmatic implications that we've discussed and that you've heard about. The reduction of the Latin program at the high school is in as part of this budget in order to provide a world language teacher for our fifth-grade students that are entering the Coakley Middle School. Our fifth-grade students haven't received foreign language, our world language. They will take that as they enter into their fifth grade for the first time. We will continue to offer Latin to the currently enrolled, we project enrollment for next year, 23 students at the high school through online programming. We are also researching and vetting some other programs that have come through, some of the comments that we've received, and we'll have more information on that to give the best programming that we can. We'll also try to the best of our ability to continue clubs associated with the program as we move forward. I will say, it is clear from the community comments, both past and present students and families, that the Latin program is an exceptionally important thing to the students that have taken it. There are, obviously, the major question here for me is the enrollment that is currently in Latin that we've had and the trends that we've had over time, and trying to look at the impact of our budgetary process on more students at the middle school in this particular case. There's also a proposed specialist schedule change at the elementary level that reduces two full-time equivalent librarian positions and transfers one full-time wellness position to the Coakley. This also reduced asks that we had in our preliminary budget. So in this particular case, we'll be providing similar or even more services in some cases over the course of the year in art, music, and wellness. It does reduce the level of library services and the wonderful things that our librarians do, both in the literacy realm of things and the technology realm of things, but it does make them equivalent to the other specials. So whereas, you know, you'll have, if you're an elementary student getting art, you'll have the same amount of library time as you get of art and as of music and whatnot. And it also makes it equal among schools, where it has not been totally equal among schools at this point. And I know that there are folks here to speak about that tonight. This schedule is a work in progress. You know, our specialists have been great giving us feedback. Our principals have been great giving us feedback on the actual schedule itself, so we're trying to find middle ground that works for them, but also works for the district and allows us to move forward with this model, but are confident that we can provide excellent services for our kids as we move forward. There are other improvements in this budget. Obviously, the staffing and operational cost to support the Coakley. There are 12.8 full-time equivalent support positions in this budget, as well as the current 12 fifth-grade general education teachers that will be providing services to the more than 290 additional students entering Coakley next year. The current fourth-grade class, obviously, we have another fifth-grade class moving in, but these ones are supporting the fifth graders next year. The positions, however, are mostly being added through internal transfers or reductions. You've heard some already, with the total request for Coakley staffing resulting only in additional 6.6 FTE positions. But again, as you can see, this 12.8 full-time support positions and 12 fifth-grade general education teachers that are being moved to support Coakley in the fifth grade. Also included here is about $125,000 for curriculum coordination at the middle school that we're still vetting to see how we want to support that curriculum coordination, as well as an additional two to three buses required to transport our fifth-grade students to Coakley each day. That's an $894,271 increase based on the new buses, but also based on the bus bid process that we just completed. This budget supports staffing for High School Freshman Academy, 1.0 freshman academy teacher or counselor. How that rolls is going to be a question for the high school and who they find. But as you know, there's been a process in place, four-phase process now actually, for multiple years, to look at a transition for students coming in, and our staff have been really hard at work to try to increase performance for students during their high school years, and this position will be funded through some of the other changes within the district, such as the library positions or shifting positions to Mass Health. There's staffing in here to ensure the safety and security of our students. As you have heard, safety has, came up in my entry planning process as one of the priorities for just about all staff and members of the community. So within this budget, there are 2.0 FTE behavioral interventionists being added. They have been requested in the past for multiple years, and they are being added in this budget to provide direct support to our general education students primarily at the elementary, to ensure the student behaviors are reduced in those classrooms. There's also an additional 1.0 Director of Safety Compliance and Communications to really look at the district oversight, but more so around policy development, training, and compliance, developing interventions, training for our staff on practices for our behavioral issues, really operationalizing those safety plans that we have within the district to ensure that we can protect and make sure our kids and our staff are safe. Again, these positions are being funded through the reduction of those other staffing that we've talked about, as well as the transfer to other positions for the future revenue from Mass Health. So the budget also requests cost of funds increases, funding increases related to collective bargaining, such as COLAs, stipends, individual contracts, special education tuition, curriculum supplies, transportation salaries, professional development, and additional stipends to support professional learning communities as we move forward. I will caution everyone that future shifts to staffing may have to occur, or may occur with possible other reorganization options, like the special education coordination models and the curriculum coordination models, but all options that we're considering will be budget-neutral in this particular process. I will also share that there are concerns nationwide about federal funding. The one concern that I see on the horizon more so than others are the reduction, possible reduction of Medicaid funds at the federal level, which impact Mass Health funding within the state, which impacts reimbursement that we would receive or possibly receive from medically-related services provided in schools, speech, OT, PT. So in terms of the tiers that you have seen already before you, obviously, the school committee has voted on a tier-one reduction. Those tier-two positions aren't necessarily safe, I will say, just because if mass health cuts do come through, we will have to consider other options to ensure that the related services that are provided to our students with disabilities, part of the law, are supported. We have some warrant articles that we submitted for Springtown meeting, such as trying to increase the Special Ed Stabilization Fund to its maximum account amounts. Again, the fund to support Mass Health reimbursement to kind of kickstart a funding source for two of our providers, or three of our providers, approval to allow technology, sorry, technology increases that Mr. Kit has brought before you already, and some approval pieces where we can allow for reimbursement for foster care, transportation, as well as a request for the town meeting to approve three-year contracts, to move from three-year contracts to five-year contracts, particularly with our bus transportation bids in the future and food service bids in the future. We feel that we may have gotten a better bids and reduced prices if we had gone to five years, and I think FinCom will be supportive of that as well. Again, appreciate everything that the constituents have done to provide the funding in Norwood Public Schools. 6.7% is not a little amount by any means, especially looking at some of the future issues that might occur with the use of so much free cash this year, which I think is going to be in the amount of 7.5 million or so probably for just this year, which means that has to be used again in the following year, and that to pay for the free cash amount if that revenue is not the same as we move forward. So with that, I will let Mr. Mannion kind of review some of the slide deck, if I will. I'll try to get this up for you, Sean. Okay.
So these slides will hit a lot of the same points that Superintendent Luff just mentioned. We went over the budget message. This first table kind of gives a little history of where we've come with the budget. It shows the 25 adjusted budget, 570.7 FTEs, 61.2 million. Our original preliminary budget was an increase of 11.6 FTEs in just under $5 million, which was an 8.1% increase. After meeting with BBC, there was back and forth, and we came to a budget that ultimately is an increase of 6.6 FTEs and an increase of $4,81,114 in a 6.7% increase. These next slides go through some of the staffing increases. So first off, you can see, opening the new Coakley Middle School. These are new positions that are added in the budget. These are the 6.6 net increase in positions. There's one special education teacher, an assistant principal, an art teacher, a music teacher, a school counselor, an ELE teacher, and a .6 administrative assistant. So all of those positions make up the 6.6 FTE increase. Then there are groups of FTEs that are all shifting. They're not increasing any FTEs in the bottom of the budget. So shifting, a .2 music teacher from elementary to middle school, a world language teacher at the middle school, which is transferred from the high school Latin, a wellness teacher transferred from elementary, four special education teachers, all transferred from elementary. So that's a total of 6.2 FTEs, but the net increase on the bottom line of the budget is zero for those because they're transferred. And then, of course, there's the grade-five classroom teachers. There's 12 teachers there, which are all being transferred from the elementary schools to the middle school, and again, that's zero increase in the budget. It's just moving from the elementaries to the middle.
And I will share for those teachers out there that are wondering, you know, when those decisions will be made and when they will be notified, I'm looking at mid-April to make sure teachers are notified and have those conversations with them, just so you all know.
So there are a few other staffing changes. As we mentioned, there's a plus-one teacher at the high school for the freshman academy. There are some, three FTEs added for safety and security, two behavior interventionists at the elementary level, and one Director of Safety Compliance and Communications. So that's an increase of four. And then on the other side of the ledger, there's two BCBA occupational therapists that we will be moving from the operating budget to Mass Health Medicaid funding and a warrant article that we're proposing. So those positions aren't going away, but they are coming off of our budget and going to other funding, and then there's a reduction of two elementary libraries. So there's four positions added, minus four in the budget, and again, the net change to the budget for these is zero. This slide just shows some of the cost increase, cost drivers that we have for salaries. So when we look at salaries, for example, for Unit A, we see that we need step increases, which are approximately 4.5% on average for teachers. However, only about 56% of teachers are already at the maximum step, so they're not eligible to receive that step increase, and that equates to about 63% of the total salaries. Teachers are also eligible to receive column transfers when they go from a bachelor's to a master's. We put $230,000 in the budget for that. And then there's an overall COLA, or cost of living, increase, which is 3.25% for next year. So all teachers get that regardless of whether they're still on the steps or whether on the maximum step. And then there's other things like stipends, reimbursements, et cetera, and that's all in that contractual base that's built into the budget. These are the reductions that went back and forth between BBC. So these are the tier-one reductions that the school committee approved and that BBC had us go back and bring down. This brought the budget from the 8.1% to the 6.7%. So we reduced technology by 37,000. We subtracted five positions. These are a lot of the elementary specialists. It's the two library, and the other positions are being shifted from elementary up to the middle school, as well as the Latin shifted down from high school. We reduced the increase for the curriculum refresh by 100,000. So instead of a budget of 350,000, we're putting in a budget of 250,000. We're going to be looking at what curriculum to implement next year and purchasing things at the end of next year, so we're really not buying any materials until the 27. We're using them in the following school year, so we can even purchase some things in the beginning of the next fiscal year if we need to. Then we looked at textbooks, instructional materials, and professional development and brought that whole area down by 80,000. We looked at the turnover slash higher-down savings. When we have a teacher who retires, that's at the high end of the teacher scale, and we replace that with a new teacher coming in lower down, we can put some savings embedded into the budget, and we looked at a conservative amount there that's consistent with prior years, and we subtracted 255,000 from the budget. And then lastly, we reduced $20,000 in material requests, supplies and equipment that the principals had put forward. Ultimately, we brought the budget down from the preliminary 8.1%. These reductions were $883,697. This is just another way of looking at sort of the whole budget. So when we look at all those base salary increases, the contractual increases for all of the step increases, transfers, the COLAs, that's 3.8% of our final 6.7% right off the bat, just to carry forward the staffing that we have. And then next year, a big discussion item has been transportation. We have a new contract for the yellow buses, and we're also increasing our drivers' rates to stay competitive. We're finding that we're not competitive in recruiting our drivers, and we're also adding between two and three buses for the middle school opening next year. We'll need to add yellow buses to our yellow bus contract. That all is an increase of 1.0. That all is an increase of 1.5% in that bottom line, 6.7%. Transportation isn't always a large increase. It's usually once every three to five years, but next year's the year that we're seeing this all coming together. And then, there were the original staffing adds of 9.6 in two, which came to the 11.6. There were other increases, things like tuition, supplies, equipment. Out-of-district tuition's a very good story next year. It typically can be a very volatile area, but we're not needing to increase that as much as in prior years, and that's a 1.2% on all those other things. So at the end, we come to the 8.1%, and then you can see the reductions for the BBC and the tier one, which brought the budget down. If you scroll down just a little bit, down to the final 6.7%. These are the warrant articles that we're proposing. One warrant article is to fully fund our special education stabilization fund. So we're asking for town approval to move 880,000 into our special education reserve. By mass state law, that can be funded at a total of 1,580,959. It currently sits at 700,000. There's capital requests for technology that were approved by the capital outlay committee that have to do with the television media lab and the computer science lab for 70,000. We're asking for $300,000 to support three positions. These are the two positions that will come off the school operating budget, and as well as one additional position that we would hope to hire. And the warrant will be a one-year bridge so that the school department can work towards increasing this revenue source. So as we mentioned, this, there are aspects of the budget that are dependent on this warrant article. If this doesn't get voted, we'll need to go back to some of the tier two reductions. And then, there are a couple that don't have any financial, but they do have some implications. There's an MOU that we need to have approved by the town in order to seek a foster care transportation reimbursement. This is when we have foster children. For instance, if a student was attending Norwood schools, but they were placed in a foster home in a neighboring community or in somewhere else in Massachusetts, they're still able to be transported to Norwood. It's not really a special education situation. It's not a homeless situation because they're in foster care in a home, but we will be able to seek reimbursement of $2,800 only if the town approves this. And then, lastly, as we mentioned, we're hoping to seek town approval in the future to seek contracts for some services, like transportation and food service, that exceed three years. These are really big, critical services that it will be really in the benefit of the school district in the future to do four- or five-year contracts. Unfortunately, we had to do those two services this year, and they'll be three-year contracts, but at least this will set in motion that in the future, we'll be able to do longer The next slide is about grants. If you want to view it, it's on, you know, available. There's quite a few federal entitlement grants that we received. The largest is the special education grant. These are all statutory, so they're all awarded by Congress, so it would, they can't change unless there's a vote of two-thirds of Congress. And we do note that we have 26.7 FTEs that are supported by these various grants, as well as 5.8 FTEs that are supported by revolving funds. The biggest of those is the tuition revolving for the preschool. Support some staffing. And this is just another way that we look at it by DESE function. It shows sort of different functional category areas. You can see on the administrative line, that's where we're increasing one for the director of safety, compliance, and communications. And then, the largest functional area is instructional, which is everything that has to do with the classroom, from supplies to teacher salaries to equipment, and that's close to 50 million, and that's the increase of 5.6 FTEs. Other school services includes transportation. Operations and maintenance includes, that includes some of our technology staff for networking. And there's some small areas that have to do with benefits and community services. And then, there's the 9,000, which is where our net out-of-district tuitions is budgeted. So we spend about $11.5 million on out-of-district tuition, and we receive state circuit breaker funds, which is a large state funding source to help offset those special education funds. And that brings this budget down to $6 million on the 9,000 category. The rest of the slides after this go into more detail on each of those functional areas. If anybody wants to see them, they're available, but I won't, I won't go through those. School committee's already seen them, and that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mannion, and thank you, Mr. Love. So to the school committee, questions or discussion that you would like to have before I open up the budget hearing to the community? The one piece of information I'll just quickly give you now, and I'll save the rest for my budget update later. We did go to the finance commission last Thursday, as Mr. Love mentioned. Thank you, Mr. Mannion and Mr. Love, for your prepared presentation. It went very well with the finance commission. It was a very efficient and effective meeting. One piece of information came out of that meeting that I think the school committee should know. So at our last meeting, we were looking at needing to use $7.2 million of free cash to balance the budgets of the school, the town, and the joint facilities. Unfortunately, the health insurance number has continued to rise. So you may remember, we first, as a town, budgeted 8% for health insurance. Then, in February, we found out that that was going to be a 10.5% increase. And then, last week, the town found out that it's a 13% increase. And that means the town needs to find, I just checked in with Jeff O'Neill this morning to make sure my numbers are right. He is estimating between $200,000 and $300,000 more of free cash. Will need to be at, discuss the town meeting to use to balance the budget because of the health insurance increase.
I have one question to that, and I don't know if you guys can answer it. So I know, it's curiosity, it's not placing blame, but it's, you know, obviously, you pick a model to try to predict. Were they too conservative, were some of the numbers too low? And I recognize that health, like healthcare costs, especially when it comes to, you know, like government and with government contracts, like is out of control, but...
I think it was just the plans of all healthcare across the board for everybody in this country are increasing. We did briefly, Emery asked that the FinCom, did the town still feel that the GIC was the best deal there is? And Jeff said yes, but unfortunately, we don't have any control as a town over what the health insurance increase will be. Would you add anything to that, Sean?
I think health insurance increases have been increasing. I mean, post the pandemic, there was a backlog, and typically, health insurance would increase by five or six percent, and then eight percent, and I think they put their best foot forward, and then it came in at 13. So this is just endemic of the healthcare world right now, I think, the increases that we're seeing.
And my colleagues, even with different plans, saw these increases across the state as well, somewhere along those, anywhere from eight to 13, I think, is what's...
Yeah, no, and my question is just, I get that, and like, you know, in that case, and it's not like this is new to this year. This has been with, you know, teacher contracts and doing this the past couple of years. I'm just curious, was this something where we picked a low number to start with, when we should have been maybe looking outside? Or was it, you know, but you guys have answered that, I guess, I guess that it's...
I'm curious if we can anticipate it to increase more.
Is this unlimited or a cutoff time?
I did ask Jeff, I believe he said they're final, right? The 13% increase is final. However, what he is assessing right now, there's open enrollment every year for employees of the town and the school, so he needs to wait until all our employees enroll in which plan to know for sure what that increase equates dollar-wise, which is why he gave me the range of 200 to 300,000.
Because people's needs change as well.
Right. Okay, so any other questions on the budget before we turn it over to the community?
I just wanted to thank everyone again for all the work that you put in since the fall. I know this is hard. It feels like a lot of things are broken in a lot of areas, you know, right now, not here, but just, I think people are feeling like that in general. And I just really appreciate the dedication and diligence with which you guys have tackled this, so that's it.
Thank you, Kate. All right, we did have a member who called ahead to register, so Laura Jordan, you are first to speak with us. And I'm not ignoring your being rude, I'm just timing, because what I'm doing on my phone. But if you could, as everybody comes up, just please share your name and your street address, or if you're an employee of the district, state that. And then, once you introduce yourself, I will start the three minutes.
Good evening, I'm Laura Jordan, 156 Wilson Street. Thank you for your consideration, again, for hearing me with a topic that's not sitting well with me as a taxpayer, a mom of three Norwood Public Schools students, and a 23-year Latin teacher in the Andover Public District. A good education provides for unity in what we do. The only viable excuse I've heard from the school committee actually admit for why Latin is on the chopping block is that the numbers have been down in recent years. But you know where else the numbers have been down? Overall attendance. According to the Mass Department of Education, the year 2018, 2019, Norwood Public Schools students who were chronically absent, that's 10% of the school year missing, was 12.4%. As of last year, we were at 25.5. That's more than double. Is the solution to throw in the towel? Tell the kids who want to show up and learn, "Sorry, there's not enough interest. Find another school"? No. But it seems that's what you're telling prospective Latin students. Do the research, listen to the experts, do not eliminate Latin. On the cusp of opening a new middle school, you've been staring the opportunity and improvement in the face. Rather than overcrowding Spanish and French and fattening our administrative positions, you could have been adding Latin to the mix. You're doing those who struggle with language learning a disservice by offering only French and Spanish from fifth grade till 12th grade. That's apples to apples, completely redundant. They're two languages cut from the same cloth. Irregular verb conjugations, false cognates, complex pronunciation. Again, do the research, listen to the experts. Don't eliminate Latin. I ask that you please consider all that you're denying our students with a proposed elimination of the Latin program. This isn't just a language. You're erasing from Norwood Public Schools national Latin exam involvement, National World Language Honor Society students in Latin, the Norwood High School Latin Club, educationally sound overseas trips by teachers who actually know what's going on. Because let's face it, you travel to Italy or Greece with a math teacher or a history teacher, you're getting a trip to Italy or Greece. You're not getting the footsteps of a Roman. Please consider your decision affects not only future, but current Latin students who will have spent the past years studying Latin in vain. Because with all due respect, I find your offer to give them an online program to continue their Latin insulting. As a parent and taxpayer, I demand better.
Ms. Jordan, that is time, but did you have other comments that you wanted to submit?
I will submit.
Okay. Thank you for your feedback.
Thank you.
Okay, so next on our list is Jeff Kerr.
Good evening, I'm Jeff Kerr, and the Director of Fine Arts here for the town in Norwood. Thank you for hearing from us tonight as we represent the entire elementary specialist team. We are here to voice our grave concerns about the proposed tier one cuts, major schedule change for the 25, 26 school year, and how they will negatively impact our kindergarten and elementary students here in Norwood. Per my contracted duties and responsibilities within NTA Unit A and B contracts, I have been working with Dr. Munoz and the scheduling team of Amy Worcester and Aaron Ruland to create the specialist schedules for the 25, 26 school year. It is the responsibility of this team to develop a schedule that is both fair for the specialists across the district and supports the buildings by providing common planning time, when available. Following past practice, the team began in December collaborating with administration on next year's schedules. On February 3rd, Dr. Munoz presented me with a new version of the schedule that did not reflect the team's combined efforts thus far, but suggested that we may be able to still work with some of the team's proposed ideas. However, given the cuts proposed in the FY26 budget, we now know that this is unrealistic. As the scheduling team worked to understand this newly proposed schedule, a meeting was called for February 25th with Superintendent Love, Assistant Superintendent Munoz, Amy Worcester, Jody Smith, and myself. At this meeting, we were informed that the schedule presented to us on February 3rd and the tier one cuts would be going to school committee that night. Because of the late notice, there was not an opportunity to fully, fairly, and accurately discuss the programmatic impacts of this decision with our staff, who serve all 1,678 kindergarten and elementary students in our district. In the committee's meeting of February 25th, you were presented with tier one cuts, which included the reduction of three FTEs in the elementary specialist team, two librarians, and one health PE position. These cuts were presented as transfers and restructures, despite the fact that during the same meeting, members reiterated that you based, that based on previous decisions made by school committee, that you would not be taking away from elementary in order to staff a five-day school. Ultimately, the elementary programs will see a reduction of three elementary specialists, all of whom are moving to the middle school, and the elementary curriculum and class time of art, health PE, library, music will be negatively impacted. The proposed schedule with the reduction of three elementary staff members seems to provide more class minutes in total, but consists of shorter daily class periods. We must consider the curricular impact of the loss of consistent, concentrated, uninterrupted teaching time. This is the time where learning is at its best, and we can lean into our content areas providing a deeper depth of knowledge for our students. Here are the reasons why we strongly urge you to review and amend your budget considerations for FY26. A reduction of time from 40 minutes to 35 minutes, how it impacts our disciplines. Art. With the proposed schedule, key materials for critical and creative thinking become difficult, if not impossible, to use effectively. Clay requires same-day prep and extensive cleanup, which cannot be managed with limited time between schools. Without adequate setup, 3D work may be lost entirely, despite its increasing importance in developing problem-solving spatial awareness and fine motor skills in a technology-driven world.
Did you breathe in that last sentence? Thank you, Mr. Kerr, that is time.
Thank you.
Next on the list is Mr. Aaron, Aaron, I know your last name, and I'm gonna train it.
My name's Aaron Ruland.
Ruland.
I'm the head library, head elementary library teacher, and I'm gonna continue where Jeff Kerr left off. With only 35 minutes per class and no transition time, students will lose even more hands-on art-making time. Cleanup is not optional. It is part of the Massachusetts State Standards for Visual Arts, requiring students to set up, maintain, and clean up a suitable workplace for a wide variety of materials and tools. Elementary art and other specialists may no longer have time to do the following annual school-wide initiatives and activities due to the proposed schedule. Field day, school-wide collaborative displays, school-wide collaborative projects, printmaking, multi-day clay and paint projects, participate in school-wide activities with students and staff, after-school enrichments and clubs and students, elementary student artwork in several annual town-wide displays, available to support and collaborate with classroom teachers and students to provide specific supplies to enhance learning in specific projects. PTA fundraiser support, such as square one art, providing time, equipment, and services in and after school, I'm sorry, in and after school activities for students. Be included in themed days with students and staff. Music. The music program used to see all grade levels for two 30-minute periods per week for the entire school year, and retention was significantly higher than it is now. It has been moved to one 40-minute period per week. Due to the decrease in teaching time, the music program has lost the town-wide recorder program, the fifth-grade musicals, as well as diminished musical literacy, retention, and attrition across the district. Instrumental music. Ensemble blocks have been reduced from 45 minutes down to 40. Now, with the proposed reduction to another, from another five down to 35, there's simply not enough time for instructional time due to the nature of setup and breakdown of the physical instruments and teaching materials. As previously mentioned, sharing staff between the elementary and middle school was not supposed to happen. For 25, 26, the instrumental teachers will need to travel to the new Coakley Middle School to maintain our lesson program during Mustang Block. This not only adds two additional travel events in the teacher's day, it also takes away from the students at the elementary level, with a number of these small group lessons will increase in size to teachers' travel time instead of lesson time. By doing this, this will limit the ability to create sections that will fully support all our students' learning needs. PE. The shortened class time is not ideal, as it takes time for students to be settled prior to instruction. We teach a standards-based curriculum and need time to develop skills and have adequate time to learn through gameplay. There's no time between classes for us to switch our equipment as our classes go on after, one after the other. For instance, even though we work on striking, floor hockey, and all grades, we use different equipments. There is an abundance of evidence suggesting that children should be receiving an abundance of PE, an increase in PE, as it not only helps improve academic performance, but there are significant benefits to exercise in... but there are significant benefits to exercise in moving one's body. Instead of creating more opportunities for PE wellness, we are moving an elementary PE staff up to the middle school. Library media. While the library program shares our colleagues' concerns about not having a time to finish lessons, the reduction in teaching time for the library media program is even more extensive. With the loss of two of our staff and an entire day of instruction with most grades, our curriculum is being severely curtailed. In addition to our traditional focus on supporting literacy and the love of reading, and our role as students supporting teachers in author print and online resources, we are rightly proud of our technology curriculum.
Can I ask you one clarifying question?
Yes, of course.
You had mentioned something that was eliminated at the 5th grade. Did you say 5th grade quarters?
Third grade recorder.
Third grader quarters, sorry.
5th grade musicals. Thank you. Third grader recorder and 5th grade musicals. When were those eliminated? So next on our list is Amy Worcester.
Hi, my name's Amy Worcester. I'm an elementary PE teacher. I'm gonna continue with what Aaron was saying. We teach forward-looking skills like computer coding, understanding how to evaluate information, and internet safety. We have been invited to present at a variety of conferences about our program. We are now faced with painful cuts to our staff and time to teach. While budget concerns are a reality, were these cuts made judiciously with a thought that was important? Or did they make the numbers fit in the schedule? These are the very skills our students will desperately need in the future parsing fact from fiction in a complicated world full of AEI, gibberish, and misinformation is hard to teach and takes time. With all these reductions in time and service, it should also be mentioned that the majority of surrounding districts, such as Walpole, Westwood, Dover, Needham, Sharon, Foxborough, and Dedham, all have specialist classes ranging from 40 to 50 minutes. Most of these specialists do not travel, or travel only on one day. Also importantly, these changes also mean that elementary classroom teachers will only have one 35-minute prep period a day, losing 900 minutes of prep over the course of the year. The proposed rotational block that is currently scheduled on Thursdays will specifically hit our 4th grade students with a reduction of time. 4th grade students will not have the additional rotation block like the other grades as they will have abandoned orchestra instead, which they currently do now. We will be unable to make up the five minutes that they are currently losing each week in art, music, library, PE, and wellness. Reality of travel. The proposed schedule has every single specialist traveling to two different buildings every single day at lunchtime. In the past, we've always created a schedule that limited specialists traveling from one building to another in the middle of the day. Specialists have always taught in more than one building, but have stayed in the building for the entire day when possible. It should be pointed out that we currently have a specialist who travels to a different building during the lunch hour this year. They are not always able to get their 30-minute lunch as they're required to clean up in one building, travel and set up in the second building. The proposed schedule of having specialists travel every single day brings up many concerns. The schedule will cause teachers to dissociate themselves with one building to arrive at the next building. We realize the district is looking at pairing schools by school size to make it equitable for specialists to have a similar caseload. But that causes, for instance, the Cleveland and the Callahan are paired together right now, smallest and largest schools, but it takes a tremendous amount of time to get from one to the other. With this proposed schedule, it will be difficult for specialists to preview in the morning with the fragmented Learning Center Special Ed staff what we are teaching in art and PE, as we currently do now. Relationships are the cornerstone of education, and this schedule will make it harder to get to know our students and their unique needs. It will be drive-by teaching. This plan vastly reduces opportunities that are now possible in the current schedule to follow up with or reach out to students and teachers when necessary. The schedule limits the opportunity for us to build and strengthen relationships with both students and colleagues. We do not believe the proposed schedule is in the best interest of our students. Instead of creating other opportunities at the elementary level, we feel like the proposed schedule will have a negative impact on what we are currently able to do. Between the loss of time each student will be spending in specials, the lack of time specials will have to set up, clean up in between classes, the loss of staff, and the added stress of traveling daily, it will mean a degraded program for all our elementary students. It moves us in the wrong direction.
Thank you, Ms. Worcester. Next is Kristina Tia.
Kristina Tia, elementary art. And I'm just gonna quickly wrap up what all of my fantastic colleagues and my boss have already started. So it will move us in the wrong direction. When the five-day model was discussed, conversations were around how to improve the elementary specials, and now 3.2 elementary specialist teachers are being cut and positions are being added to the Copley Middle School. 5th grade students will now have two 53-minute specials a day, while elementary students are slated to have one 35-minute special a day. We want to thank you for your time and listening to our concerns. We look forward to working with the administration to make sure our specialist programs continue to be the very best that they can be. Thank you.
That is everybody who had signed in in advance. But is there anybody at this time who has not spoken that would like to speak? Jody Smith?
Good evening. Jody Smith, President Norwood Teachers Association. That's how I am speaking to you this evening. You have heard from my colleagues. Their concern is for their students and for the amount of time they are going to lose and the instruction that they are going to lose. The wonderful specialists sitting behind me have created a robust curriculum that they currently give every single day. That will be lost because of the amount of time that it is going to take to set up and break down and then travel to schools. Not any other teacher in this district is asked to travel that much during the week. You also have to think about an art class, especially when you're dealing with first grade, second grade, and what they offer. Because a class is going to start, and as soon as that class starts, 35 minutes tick away, and at the door comes in the next class. That will be a first-grade class going to maybe a fourth grade. Those skills are absolutely different. So when the teacher is trying to set up for the next class, those materials are completely different. Now, the way the schedule is set up is there may be two back-to-back second grades, or maybe two first grades back-to-back. That amount of time is different when you have back-to-back grade levels. The stress that this has put on the staff and will put on the staff because of the travel. You finish your class, you have a 30-minute travel time, you have a 30-minute lunch. You have to pack up your things at school A. You are going to have to then unpack everything at school B. We have always here tried to keep first grade not having specials in the morning. That will no longer happen because one building will have specials all in the morning and then others all in the afternoon. So by the way that will be set up, first grade will have specials in the morning, which is their optimum time for learning. Second grade was also, a minimum of specials would be held in the morning. I can't say enough about the collaboration that we have had in the buildings with our specialists because they have been able to develop those relationships, not only with the students, but also the families and with their colleagues. I do understand the problem that you're in. I do attend all those budget balancing meetings, so I do understand. However, I am asking you to take another look and maybe find something that is not student-facing. That has been something that this committee has always done, to try to look at programs and positions that do not affect the day-to-day face-to-face of the students. So I would like to thank everyone who was here today. I would like to thank Jeff, Dr. Munoz, Mr. Luff, Amy, and Aaron. They have worked tirelessly in trying to figure out this jigsaw puzzle. And the only way they can do that is to have some of these positions back. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Anybody else like to speak at this time? Would anybody like to speak again who has spoken to us already? So there is nobody online that was waiting to speak, correct?
There's none, nope.
Okay, so back to the school committee after we've heard concerns and questions from our community. Do you have further concerns, questions, direction that you would like to give to the Budget Subcommittee, Mr. Luff, and Mr. Manion?
Kate. Yes? I respectfully feel a little blindsided by some of what we've heard today, just now. And like, I feel like we've not heard the narrative that we just heard. So I feel like without putting anybody on the spot, that means that there is a misunderstanding. I feel like things were represented, that there was more support for a new model. I feel like if that's not the case, then we're not, I mean, no matter what. It's not that change isn't difficult and that sometimes we have to make change and people have to be able to move through that. But I worry about, I have new concerns. I worry about the success of the implications of this, particularly around the Tier One specials issue. So I guess for discussion's sake, I would generate a motion to look for, to have the Budget Balancing Committee...
The Budget Subcommittee?
Sorry, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Budget Subcommittee, since that's kind of what you were asking in terms of looking at things. You know, I prefaced these things with giving my thanks for the diligence and all of that. And I understand the complexity of all of the things that you guys are juggling. But I feel like we need better information, at least to assure us now that we have conflicting narrative, to be able to speak to that. So again, without putting people on the spot today, or if people do want to speak to that today, that's fine. But maybe a motion to have the Budget Subcommittee look at these changes again. I'm open to amendments if it makes sense.
For clarification, Kate, when you say to look at it again, are you asking to look at it in the context of the feedback and the different options of making it work? Or are you saying look at and bring forth other reductions instead? What are you asking for?
Both. If there's a counter to what we've heard, which is kind of what we've had before, I guess I just want, I just I don't know if there's anything...
Let me see if there's a second on the motion. Is there a second on Kate's motion to have the administration and the Budget Subcommittee continue to look at both this model as well as additional possible reductions instead? Is there a second on that motion? Okay, I'm gonna second for discussion because I do want to hear what people are thinking. So I will second for discussion. Joan, are you wanting to speak? I think you're muted.
I'm not muted. I just keep opening my mouth and...
Oh. Sorry, didn't mean to call you out.
I didn't second the motion because I'm unsure what the motion was directed. But allow me to perhaps paraphrase what I think I hear you saying, Kate, which is you'd like for the administration to look at reducing... You'd like for the administration to look at the specialist schedules and see if we can achieve cost savings with a different specialist schedule? Is that what?
No, not specifically. I don't want to limit people into what options are presented. I just to relook at these, the specialist reconfiguration, if it's going to have, and what its, you know, effects are more specifically. Again, it's really tricky because I just, I thought we were in a different place with it, with staff and the departments. I thought there was benefits that... And so, not, I wasn't prepared to hear the things that we heard. So we can't, someone needs to say, okay, we need to talk about this and look at this again, given what we, given that the people doing it have now stepped up and said, you know, it's not about enrollment necessarily. It's not this data thing where we have not to be, you know, about Latin. It's not, certainly that's similarly, we've heard a negative response about Latin as well. But you see what I'm saying? It's a different circumstance. So Joan, yes, I want to look at it again, but if there are alternatives other than around the specialist structure, then that shouldn't be limited to that.
Ms. Kerr?
I'm hesitating because I don't want, I apologize. I'm not trying to, I just don't want to hand people in with a motion that is either, given the process, which is either too strict or too, you know, too specific.
No, I'm glad you're raising this, and this is probably the reason why we changed our budget calendar this year, where we have our budget hearing and then our final vote a week later. In past years, we did the budget hearing and the final vote right away.
Yeah.
So we very strategically created our budget calendar different this year to allow for this, that if things were brought to us from the community and the committee wanted things to be relooked at or had further questions for the administration and the Budget Subcommittee, that we would have time to do so. We do have to vote on our budget next week. Like, that's really hard we have to because then we have to get things through the Finance Commission to vote on the 27th and then to town meeting for the budget book. So if there's anything that the school committee wants further information on, now is the time to ask and provide that direction. Kate, I just wanted to follow up on part of what you're asking because I think Mr. Luff might be able to clarify some of it. So if we were, I'm just trying to get facts and data. If we were to go back to the drawing board and say we can't change the schedule in terms of the reduction and the movement of staff, that means two librarian positions and then one wellness that was being transferred to the Copley. So then if we go back to the presentation that Sean gave us, and we're looking at the list of everything we said that we are gonna get into the Copley, we would then have to potentially eliminate three of those, correct?
That's correct.
Or three FTEs somewhere else in the budget. So I provide that just so everybody knows what we're talking about. I'm not taking a stance on yes or no either way, but just factually what that means. So is that correct, Ms. Luff?
If I may comment on some of the...
Yes, please.
...schedule. So this came to us, and as, first of all, thank you for sharing the detail tonight. And the specialists came to Dr. Munoz and I, I want to say a week ago or so now, and had these same conversations. And we've been working with them, trying to figure out the best way to do this that works best for kids, that works best for them. It's not perfect. I hope I never presented that as a perfect option. It is an option, after looking at the way the schedules have been reviewed in the previous years, as looking at some, for lack of better words, white space in the schedule because they're in different spots and trying to accommodate the classes in the schools. And working with Dr. Munoz and trying to put together something outside the box to figure out a way to have services for kids in a more efficient way as well, but still provide excellent services. The proposed schedule, what it does allow for is prep time for teachers at the same time in grade levels every day. So there are some really good instructional pieces within that schedule that not all schools have now. Some schools do, and some schools have it for some days, but not for all days. So it gives that same grade level one, for example, prep time at the same time where they can naturally work together if they want to, or have their time together. It does have the three teams, right? The specialist team of three, kind of being at one school and then of course, sorry, at one school, and then moving to the next school in the afternoon. That is something concerned that I've shared, that they have shared over time. But we have been working with specialists and Dr. Munoz to kind of come up with all the solutions that we possibly can for the concerns that have come across. There were concerns about where space could be provided for the specialists to make sure that we're in rooms or we're, you know, in separate locations. Dr. Munoz has done a lot to work on those things and has shared that back with the team. Just, I want to say yesterday, the day before, or maybe Friday, he met with the folks and actually presented what could be a 40-minute schedule for the specialists based on their concerns that they had to ensure there were still 40-minute specials. But still allowed for those cross...
So you're looking at that now?
We've been going back and forth on schedules and work with specialists to try to accommodate many of the issues, including the 40-minute schedule time. Because we hear the concerns, and we're gonna be a team on this no matter what. Change is hard, and not everybody's gonna agree on what that change might be and how that is. But I've always promised that as we've gone through this process, I will listen to the concerns and work with the folks as we go through. And this could be, you know, and I asked them too to come up with schedules. What can we do with those? If we were to reduce those three, what schedules do you have that you can come up with that still kind of accomplish similar goals? And so we're vetting their schedules, they're vetting our schedules. That's the idea as we move forward, with the understanding that we're looking to reduce those three positions.
So Tim, as part of this, have you looked at the Copley model? And you guys know I hate...
And you guys know I hate micromanaging. I, I understand this is what you do. But this is, I'm asking on behalf of what I think the public is wondering. So have you looked at the specials in the Coakley? And I know we had a strategic plan and we had goals around new programming for that place, but obviously, no one would have vote, was voting for things in, during that time that was thinking that we're going to take time away or, you know, from other schools, elementary schools. So have we, is, has it been considered to, you know, reduce specials at the middle school in terms of like their timing? Like, has that, I'm sure, have you looked at all?
Well, yeah, I mean, we're in the process. We've been adding, we're adding an art teacher, we're adding a music teacher right over at Coakley as part of this budget process.
Because, because you can't, you can't do it with the current specialist there. They, the, the add of students wouldn't.
That's, that's, that's correct. That's 290-plus students moving into the Coakley in addition to the current students.
So even if they went from, how many, how long are their specials now?
I have to.
Like 50.
All, all the classes are the same.
50, yeah.
15 minutes a class period up there.
Right, so it doesn't, the math doesn't math if you.
I'm, I'm sure I could.
Reduce their specials down?
We, we could look at that. I'm sure I'd have the same concerns from my colleagues over here on, you know, on trying to make sure that wellness and.
No, yeah, but like spreading out the.
The, the challenge with that, Kate, is middle school, not every class has specials at the same time. So if a sixth grade class.
A sixth grade team is going to specials, the other sixth grade teachers are teaching their subjects. And so if those kids were to get out of specials for 40 minutes or 30 minutes, they got to have somewhere to go for 20 minutes and everyone else is in class teaching. That's, that's kind of the issue and the challenge with that. Same thing would be here. So when teachers are obviously taking the kids to specials, they're either at their prep, you know, which is what they're contractually allowed, or, and everyone else in the building is teaching. We could increase specials minutes at the elementary. We can go 50 minutes an hour, but we got to cut down ELA blocks, we got to cut down math blocks, we got to cut down. Where at the Coakley, everything is 50 minutes. So you're going to ELA for 50 minutes, you're going to social studies for 50 minutes, you're going, so they, that's, and it's different. Like, first grade has ELA for 90 minutes. Like, in, because it's first grade, they need, they need more.
I guess what I just meant was like, if we're, if we're looking at stretching people in elementary level, is there a model in which you stretch people at middle school?
Well, I think Dr. Frezick has already done that, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Munoz or Mr. Lef, but she is changing the Coakley to a trimester model.
Yeah, I think we presented that too a few, a few months ago.
And the trimester model was to help her efficiently and effectively staff. So I think she's done some of what you're asking.
Okay.
Because they'd originally asked for more music, more.
Yeah.
Right, in the, in the original ask.
This is all so incredibly complicated, and it's really challenging, and this is not a critique of anybody around this table, it's really challenging when there's been so much transition in our administrative leadership. And I've been on the Coakley project since it started in 2017. So I have binders and binders of information in my house, and I spent some time going through it. Originally thought we were going to need it at the finance commission, but they didn't ask, but I have tons of numbers. So if you think back to December 2020 until February 21, that is when this district was like deeply involved in the ed visioning that I know some of the specialists in the room today were part of. I remember you at those sessions. And the school committee in the spring of 21, that is when we voted on if we were going to move forward with a five through eight or six through eight. And most of us were on the committee at that time, and you remember how many meetings we had with our ed planner, with Dana Brown, with Dr. Frezick, with AI3, to figure out what was the best, the best decision for our district. And in May of 21, we did decide the five through eight. But back in 2021, what we were told then, and it's changed many times, but what we were told then is that we would need an additional art teacher. I believe that's in our budget, correct him?
Yes.
Okay. We were told that we would need an additional point two wellness at the Coakley, but through the proposed budget, with the reallocation, we're getting an additional one. And that, from my understanding, is tied to the curriculum refresh that we recently did, and we wanted more time for health, right, not just PE for our Coakley students. It was predicted four years ago that with the shift of grade five to the Coakley, there would be a reduction of .75 in library. I understand that's less than what we're talking about now, but that was something in our documents four years ago. It was identified that we would need a .3 music, and that was just general music. That was not also the ensembles. We said we wanted an additional STEM. We're not getting the STEM, correct?
You're not.
We have not been able to get the STEM teacher into the budget. And in that ed plan, that I still highly encourage everybody in town to read, to understand what we're trying to do, we, we really sold the STEM program and the project lead the way, and we're not able to staff that due to the revenue stream. We had said that we would need an additional world language. Obviously, that is something that we are talking about. Special education, ELE, was always to be determined. At that time, Dr. Thompson felt like he could not predict where we would be, and we had said we would, we would do it, we would do it. Unfortunately, I think we, we addressed that a little too late, and I think Mr. Lef for stepping in and helped us figuring that out now. We said we would add an additional guidance counselor, which we are, that is to support grade five. We said that we would need one custodian. Now, that's no longer under our budget, that's the facility budget, but Paul Ricardi feels that he needs two, and I believe that is moving forward in the Joy facilities budget, two additional custodians. And then back in 2021, it was also identified that we would need additional front office support because more students need more secretaries, administrative assistance. Now, part of what has transpired over the last four years is that in FY '25, '24, '23, and '22, Dr. Frezick came to us with requests that we were unable to fulfill. So she asked us multiple times from '21 to now to add an additional music teacher because they needed the music at the Coakley already for the ensembles. We were not able to get that into any budget cycle. She asked us for an additional world language teacher because we were trying to grow world language at the Coakley even before now. We were not able to get that into the last four budget cycles. She asked us for an additional technology in STEM. Again, we have been unable to get that into the last four budget cycles. She asked for 1.25 in front office support. We have only been able to get in .4 in the last four budget cycles. So those things have been identified consistently since 2021 and brought to the school committee year after year after year after year, and we have had to say no for a lot of justifiable budgetary reasons, but those things have long been deemed necessary. Now, it is true wholeheartedly that this committee has always said we did not want to take away from the elementary to staff the Coakley. I still feel very strongly about that. I believe Mr. Lef feels that way as well. There are decisions unfortunately that we asked our previous administration to make that they did not, and I want to thank Dr. Munoz because he has done what we've asked him to do, which is look district-wide, not building by building, not level by level, but district-wide. In our educational plan for the Coakley, and I know this is part of our portrait of the Nora grad, but we, in multiple places, said that our vision for the five through eight Coakley was that we wanted culturally competent global citizens who are critical problem solvers and lifelong learners. And that's what we're trying to achieve. But that is also the goal for the entire district, right? Pre-K through 12. So I'm, I'm just sharing these numbers because I always try to think of where were we? How did we get here? What's the story? And having been in the seat for eight and a half years, there's a lot of stories in my brain. And I just try to remember what I said or what the committee said and what it is that we're, you know, seeking out to do. Kate, I completely hear your questions. I respect everything that was raised tonight. I, I trust Mr. Lef when he says that there's going to be a way, I hope, to, to work through it.
I mean, this is a work in progress that we continue to go until we feel like it's comfortable for everybody. I feel it based on what I've seen in the work that we've done, that, and unfortunately, it does include the reduction of, of staff at the elementary, but I feel like it's a, it's a, it's a doable and solid plan that we can put across that will work for, for our kids and our staff. And I have been hesitant to share the schedules, right? Stuart knows, we've shared the budget sub, budget subcommittee this last week, one rendition, because I know that's going to be changing as we get more input from the specialists as well as more from JJ, and we're working together to make it better. Because already, we have something new, right? That's, that's 40 minutes because it's, it was a big concern of folks here. You know, what haven't we accomplished yet and haven't we finalized yet and tried to fix is the travel time, right? Because that is a concern of them, I hear that. Travel each day is, is hard, but that is, that is part of it. We haven't been able to figure out a model between us that doesn't include that yet and still work in this way. But that's the primary thing. We solved some space issues. We solved some times, I think, where, you know, where, for the most part, not every day, we're still trying to work on that, some of the specialists don't have a block at the end of their time or the beginning of their time, right, in each of the schools.
Before or after their lunch block?
So that way, there's more time for the prep that, that they've been concerned about. So we're really working through it, and I'm hoping that we can come up with something that works, that's.
Okay. Who's working through it?
I would say Dr. Munoz, myself.
Jeff, Amy, and Aaron.
Okay. Okay, that's good. Kate, do you want an update on the schedule and, and status next week?
Like, I don't want to vote on this if we don't have clarification around what's going, what's going on. Because I think, like, I hear what you're saying about what the Coak, what the Coakley has, what we've foregone for them, and it's not like they're sweeping up all the resources. I get what you're saying. And everybody has to, we're trying to be equitable in terms of how these cuts are spread out, but we also want to avoid unintended consequences to Jody's point about first graders and materials or the points that were made about, you know, just the kid, you know, getting calmed down enough to, you know, use their instrument or whatever it is. So what are the unintended consequences? Like, have we really, I know you guys are working really hard on this. I, I do understand the challenge, and I appreciate the creative thinking, but I did not expect your own staff, like, people that are going to be directly affected to come speak out in this way, because I thought it was more incorporated, so, just being honest. So yes, if we could have an update, maybe, is that, you want a different motion?
I'm just trying to think all this through with, with all of you. We currently do not have a budget subcommittee meeting scheduled. I tried to get a schedule on just for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But we'll figure it out. We'll figure it out if we need to. But again, Wednesday is when we have to vote on our, on our budget. So if anybody has additional information or you want something, revisit it so we can feel comfortable as a school committee voting next week, now is the time to request that and, and if it's a motion, vote on it.
What do you think's feasible, Tim, like?
Well, we have the most rendition, the newest schedule that we've been working through, so we can share at any time.
So they did share it with us, Dr. Munoz, at our last budget sub. Was that just two days ago?
It was Monday.
Oh, my gosh, two days ago.
Is it reflected in what folks were talking about today?
Some of the things Dr. Lef talked about, we still, like, the travel time is something that, that's very hard for us, but we've have a, for example, we have a schedule proposal where ensemble time with instruments is actually increased. It's gone back to 45 minutes versus the 40 or 35 that was currently proposed. We do have a 40-minute schedule as, on, on the board, but those three are, you know, the three people that I'm working with right now are looking at it and they're combing through it, and we're seeing what are the other challenges on that schedule. So, so every day, literally, there's tweaks made to the schedule based off of feedback. And I'm confident that we'll get to something where a lot of people will agree with parts of the schedule, but I don't think we're ever going to have full consensus because of some of the hardships of, like, travel. And if we went back to the schedule that we currently have, some of those problems that, that were mentioned still exist, so.
Right.
And so, you know, there's, there's those things too, and, and we got to think about some of the other elements of the building, first in skin IP services and yearly services and how to schedule those with block scheduling and stuff like that, so.
The, the schedule's very complicated, like, if you just look at it, and we definitely need somebody to tell us what is on the spreadsheet. Like, it's even more complicated than the ones we saw from Dr. Frezick at the Coakley. But I, I do wonder, Mr. Lef and Dr. Munoz, if you could create a version of that that is easy for the committee and the community to understand, that addresses the concerns tonight, that addresses the question Kate is asking. That way, when we vote on the budget next week, people have full understanding?
Yeah, and I actually think it would be important to show the, the previous schedule too, as it was created, right? Because you'll see the, the spaces in that schedule, right? And not that our folks aren't finding incredibly important work to do with our kids in each and every one of those schools, but I think it's important to see that too. And I know that there was a promise, I know this, and I said this to the specialists too, there's a promise not to shift elementary up to middle school, but you have 290 students moving up.
Well, that wasn't specific. The, the promise was that there, we always acknowledged there may have needed to be movement of staff. It was that we weren't going to sacrifice the programming at the elementary for the five through eight middle school. That, that's at least what I remember motioning on.
And I just think that we need, the public is going to want, and elementary parents are going to want to understand the why's. Like, here's what the reasoning is in a way that makes a very complex situation more adjustable, if, you know, whatever we land on, you know?
Which is why I'm recommending the old, the current, the old schedule too, the way it looked, what it would look like with the current staff, right, compared to what it looks like without. So you can see the reasons we saw that and said, well, we need to look at a different way to make it work, so.
Could I ask Mr. Manion or Mr. Lef, I guess you're driving this, can you go back to the slide that just shows this one right here, like, the different positions that we're restructuring, allocating and stuff? Because again, just, just factually, unfortunately, with our budget, we need to find three FTEs somewhere, if not in the proposal that has been brought forth tonight. So if the budget subcommittee meeting, the subcommittee is going to have to meet again, I, I would like direction from my colleagues on what are your other questions on other things? And this also goes back to the tier two. Mr. Lef, just remind us what the tier two options were.
It was the curriculum coordination at the middle school. It was either high school, science or English teacher. It was the transportation increases salaries for the drivers. And I'm missing those.
There was one more position.
And there's still a thing hanging over our head in terms of Medicaid.
There is.
That there could be further reductions. So some of this could be a moot conversation.
I, I think.
Not that we can function and, right, we have to do what's right in front of us, but.
But be prepared, that could be an option.
But I also just want to share that, you know, this is a conversation that we're having now for FY '26, but certainly, it's a conversation when we're looking at next year and moving forward, that it's a conversation we'd have again as we look at even more, looking at more efficiencies and different things. So I just want to caution the committee on, on, on those pieces as we move forward.
I think it was also maybe a special education teacher.
Don't know. Let me, let me just pull it right up here for just a second.
It was, thank you. It was an elementary position.
It was, it was the elementary position.
It's the old ham, yeah.
Yeah, so it was one FT at the high school, either ELA or science, one elementary position, the curriculum coordination for five through eight at the Coakley, which was something identified in the ed plan we needed to figure out, and then the reduction of a salary increase that we could give our transportation drivers, which we know are not competitive in the market, and we need to make sure we can get our kids to school.
If the, here's a left field question. If the fifth graders weren't doing world language, Tim, what would they be doing?
Well, it would have to be a different special of some sort to fill a block. I mean, there's got to be some block in there for them to fill their schedule.
Okay, so it's not, it's how, it's, okay.
Can I ask, well, Stuart, you mentioned STEM, because we had a science coordinator that left our system?
Yes.
And that position was not filled. I'm just wondering where the money went. Are you talking about where money's going?
You're talking about the number of years ago?
She left this year.
Oh, I'm sorry. I understand what you're talking, yeah. Yes, normally, we wouldn't take questions.
I'm so sorry.
It's okay, it's okay.
You said STEM and being library, we do teach STEM as well.
No, I'll, I'll allow it. So this is something that we talked about a while ago in the last quarter of report. So we did, we have three, we had three elementary coordinators, English, math, and STEM. One left at the beginning of the year. I'm sure this is going to be in the quarter three report, but that's a while out. Where, what are we currently doing with that roughly 125, right, 125,000?
Yep, that's about what it is. That position is open to possibly support career, special education coordination as we move forward and look at reorganization options for next year.
So there is the motion. Kate, I'll paraphrase. Tell me if this is still where you are, if you want to scrap the motion and start over. But I, I think the motion that you put on the table and I seconded for discussion was to have the administration, the budget subcommittee revisit this and bring updated information next week. As well as if there were alternatives for reductions. Does that capture what you were asking?
Yes, and just to communicate a response to what we heard from the audience tonight, if that, that'd be great.
So on that motion, is there further discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll I'll take a vote. So Joan? Yes, okay. Anne Marie?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
David?
I'm abstaining.
Abstaining, okay. Um, yes, as well, so it does pass four and one abstention. So Mr. Lef and Mr. Dr. Munoz, if you could be prepared to bring us more information next week. And then offline, Anne Marie, you and I and Mr. Mannion and Mr. Lef should figure out when we're meeting again as a subcommittee. Okay, anything else further from the school committee at this time on FY twenty-six budget? Or requests that you want more information on before we vote on our final budget next week? One thing that I was thinking of, Mr. Lef, I think you're already doing this, but maybe as as you are just looking further into all of this. There was, there were some concerns raised about things that have been reduced in past years that I don't think ever fully came to the attention of the school committee. So going forward, again, not anyone's fault in this area, but going forward, if things are being reduced, we we should know. But there were also some concerns specifically around wellness that I just want to make sure the curriculum is in alignment with our wellness policy and also our recess policy. And then, just as a point of reference, you know, as a school committee and as a community, we have invested in a lot of curriculum in the areas that we have heard about tonight. So last year, we approved the visual arts curriculum update and the wellness update. And I believe, Dr. Munoz, right now, there is the
Music.
music curriculum piloting going on, correct? So we should just remember that we're making investments in these areas. And we want to make sure that we have the staff and the time to implement the curriculum. Anything else on budget? Okay, so then, at eight thirty-seven, I will declare our budget hearing for FY twenty-six closed. I do thank everybody who came this evening.
Thank you.
I think I can just adjourn. I believe. We need a motion to go in, but I can. I could say we're done. I believe. Everyone want to keep going? Or does anybody want a five-minute recess before we move on?
Okay.
Keep going? Okay. Okay, so again, it's a little bit of a of an odd agenda, because after budget hearing is our normal public comment. The public comment would be for any other issue that is outside of budget, but under the discretion and authority of the school committee. So as a reminder to the community, there are two ways that you can access public comment. We have public comment before every business meeting. We will have one again next Wednesday, March twenty-six. You can either call the superintendent's office by noon the day of and pre-register. You can pre-register to speak in person or online, or you can show up to our meeting and sign up to speak to us. Is there anybody in the room who wants to talk to us about a non-budget item under a public comment? Okay, seeing none. At eight thirty-nine, I will declare public comment closed. We already had our appearance. So, Mr. Lef, your superintendent report, please.
Great, thank you. And and there was no online request for public comment, by the way.
Oh, I'm sorry. I asked that earlier.
Yeah, I think I might have been over there.
Yeah.
The first thing I'd just like to share is our two thousand twenty-five John and Abigail Adams Scholarship Award winners that we have. And I will share that just list. And I just want to congratulate those students who have gotten these scholarships. A question for the chair, is that something that the superintendent will usually read off or just present to you?
It's been done both ways in the past. Usually, I will want to, like, make an announcement after every meeting, you know, and congratulate the students by name. But if you would like to read the names, however you prefer to handle it, Mr. Lef.
All right, well, why don't I go for it? Because I think it's nice to have people's names heard on on screen. So congratulations to, and I apologize again if I if I mispronounced the names, but Abby Elias, I'm sorry, Mariella Abilius, Xander Allen, Fatima Almo Sawi, Jason Amos, Anna Art Simon, Oscar Bautista, Ethan Betts, Ashlyn Bauer, Jason Bauer, Colleen Brady, Hedo Bratzis, Annette Button, James Kai, got that one right this time?
Yep, he did.
Thank you. Lindsey Collins, Aidan Connealy, Bridget Connolly, Zaina Dada, Julia Danunzio, Jason Dele Carpeini, Georgia Demby, Braden Evans, Julia Figareto, Mary Flaherty, Angelo Gentili, Gavin Garrity, Joseph Geri, Gerish, Catherine Green, Timothy Guarin, Samuel Gurney, Victoria Hannah, Liam Harvey, Ava Heinz, Partha Jamal Ahmad Daka, Juno Joe, Cody Jergelwitz, Griffin Kelly, Brendan Langley, Shay Larky, Olivia Loud, Maxwell Megan, Liam McGuire, Daniel Martin, Natalie Martin, Thomas Martin, Charlotte Martino, Anna Michaelidis, Patrick Moore, James Murphy, Corey O'Brien, Ava O'Neil, Evan O'Neil, Iman Iman O'Reilly, Joseph Paredes, Palanco Leana, Hanika Perhut, Andrew Quinn, Gustav Rang, Molly Roach, Harini Salvajara, Colleen Sisk, Bridget Sople, Bridget Stenstrom, Kara Sullivan, Daven McCoy Taylor, Sophia Tuma, Ryan Valerie, Kyra Walsh, Jack Weifer, Aaron Wong and Julia Zenotelli. Congratulations on being the twenty twenty-five John and Abigail Adams Scholarship Award winners. And I apologize because I know I didn't get them all right.
Thank you for reading their names, Mr. Lef, and congratulations to the students.
The next thing I want to do is just do a, give a quick update on student government day, which is going to be next week here, March twenty-sixth. This is a day where students in the entire, in our seventh course at the high school kind of engage in town government by role-playing. Actually, I'll share this instead. By role-playing positions in the town government. And in our case, we have two superintendent role players and five school committee role players. They will be joining me in the morning on the twenty-sixth. We've been, and I haven't announced this to them yet, so typically, they've gone to schools, but given the time and some of the town activities that they're going to be engaging into, we're actually going to have them come here. I'm going to have them meet with the principals, where the principals will actually express a problem they've heard from their from their staff or their or their students. And they will take those ideas or those thoughts they hear, and then they will decide something to debate on that evening at six o'clock here in the school committee room as the school committee members. There will be a small pizza lunch here at five thirty, and then they'll do a mock school committee meeting. So really excited to do that. I think it's going to be a lot of fun, but that is scheduled for March twenty-sixth next week.
So, Mr. Lef, you would like as many school committee members to come for the pizza and the mock meeting?
I do understand schedules are hard, but if you can be here at five thirty or at least six, I think that would be wonderful for them to see, or you to see them, be you. Yes.
So if I could just ask the committee to please let him know by Monday?
Sure.
If you think you'll be able to come, just so if we need to arrange any planning, we can do so.
Just wanted to stop sharing, but I'll do that. I just wanted to give the school, oh, school committee a quick update, if you're ready for the next one. On before-school programming, there's been a lot of questions from the community to me about before-school programming, which is not one of our programs. It's run by the town. I'll just transfer it over. There was a notification that went out to families that there would be no before-school programming next year. I I will, will share with you that currently, Prescott, we have five families that access before-school programming. At Cleveland, we have five families that, I should say, register for before-school programming. And at Cleveland, we have five students that register for before-school programming. Cleveland's very full, and those kids access regularly. Prescott's more sporadic. Based on those particular numbers, it's been very difficult to staff those programs. As you know, the the time change has shortened the amount of time needed typically for for those programs. So the town is having a difficult time staffing this and have tried very hard to. They've increased stipends for staff to do that, to come, and they're still challenged to support those, those, I would say, seven to ten students that are currently accessing. There was a survey done and similar numbers have been provided to them as for interest next year. So they're really challenged at those levels. They also did some survey data on fifth and sixth grade, and there's about twenty, twenty or so students that are interested. I did ask them to kind of sit with Margot. Dr. Freyzak can talk about, you know, what it could look like, what the time would be. And then to see if they could staff it, to see if they would reconsider since there were about twenty students that were interested in five to six. So that's not going away. Yet, there is some options for them that they're considering. Mr. Mizuko, I talked to as well, and he's certainly open to considering that. You know, we want to be able to support our kids as long as we can staff those those before-school programs, so. But I did want you to be aware of that, just because I got the message and I figured maybe you would, you would as well. The message was, yeah, we're not registering. Go ask the superintendent. So I, I took some messages and kind of went from there.
So, Mr. Lef, I know I spoke to you earlier about this, but the the history, again, the context behind this was that when the school committee did vote on the school start times. And then further to change the Cogli model to five through eight, we did in twenty twenty-two, put on the website through a press release and in our meeting that we were committed to fifth grade having the option for before-school care at the Cogli and then sixth grade as well, if there was the need. There was a lot of discussions between the transition of the program from us to the REC Center. I thought they were aware of that. But I appreciate that you just said that you're asking them to continue looking into it. So thank you for doing that.
Of course.
If I could also, I I received a couple of emails as well on this, just because people know I've been working on the extended day topic for a while. And a couple of people brought to my attention that a pricing structure change happened this year and that also vouchers are not available. And if those two things are true, that is a violation of the MLU the school committee signed with the town. So I was wondering if you could look into that.
I will, yes.
Was it, but it was a limited time, right?
It's a whole school year. They can't change it this whole school year.
Is the change for this year or for next year?
Current school year. Apparently, there's been pricing changes and no vouchers, and those two things weren't supposed to happen. I don't, I just got the feedback, so I'm just.
That's just wild.
So that's not come up in any of my conversations at all, with everything we've gone through.
Yeah, but if you could look into that for us.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you so much.
Of course. One more, quick one, if you're ready. This one is just an update on the principal search, with Dr. Gallagher moving on in a role next year here in Norwood. There is a timeline and a process that I've created along with the HR department to hire our next principal of the high school that would begin on July one. I have two in here for you. We actually are working off timeline process two, which I posted with the community on Friday, which essentially has us post on school spring and different things on Friday, so the position we posted. We'll go through a similar process as we have done with the director of student services. We will have kind of a a quick a meeting with the high school staff as well as the families and caregivers. I will do that to find the qualities of the person that folks are looking for in their next principal. We will receive resumes by April fourth, and then as a central office, we'll do a quick screening of those resumes, just to make sure that those, the qualifications are there, essentially. We will then do fifteen-minute virtual screening interviews as a central office staff, just to kind of get a feel for up to eight to twelve candidates, essentially. And then from there, we'll then have a formal interview committee that will meet with five to seven candidates at the high school. Similar to last time, we'll have representation from school committee, so we'll be looking for a member of the school committee that wants to be a part of the high school search. High school administration, high school teachers, parents, guidance, student services, ELL, central office admin and and the union representation will be there as well. So I would be asking one of you to to let me know if you'd be interested. I will debrief, and we will bring at least three finalists for site visits. They will spend the day at the high school. They will, and I've asked, Dr. Gallagher, Gallagher actually helped set this up. They will have opportunities to meet and have discussions with staff that are there, that are available during that time. So it won't only be the forum in the evening, they'll have the opportunity to do that. Not all high school staff, obviously, because of their teaching loads, will be able to be part of that, but we will have some structures where that happens in the visit. They will have a separate interview with our central office staff as well as with me. They will have lunch at the high school. And I know I've invited you folks to the student service one. We'll probably invite you as well to the the high school one, just so you can meet the candidates if you like. But we'll do those three visits on April twenty-ninth, thirtieth and first. Evening forum will be on May first. And that will be at the high school as well from six thirty to eight forty-five. Depending on the comments that I get from from the high school, I have to, I'll determine whether I want two separate, like, high school staff kind of forum or parent forum. I haven't really decided on that yet, but that structure will be there, where there will be a forum for folks to meet and greet a candidate. And then I will conduct reference checks to the point on the week of May, between May second and fifth is the goal. And so that's, that's the process there. There is a job description in here that I reviewed, Dr. Gallagher reviewed, we just kind of went through. It it did not seem that it needed to be changed when I went through it. So it's, I'm not asking for a vote on it today, but I did want to say that if you feel like you want to modify it in any way, I would ask that you do vote on it tonight and make a change, because I want to get it posted on Friday. But I I wasn't requesting that at this time, but I will take any feedback that you have if you want me to make any changes to it. It seemed, it was very relevant to the role still.
Is there any questions or feedback on that job description, on the timeline? And is there a school committee member who wants to volunteer to be on that screening committee? So, Tim, the date that you would need somebody to be available is April sixteenth?
It was April sixteenth, yes.
So I am unavailable that day. I have a commitment.
You want me to come, even though I won't be on the board? I'm unavailable, because I won't be on the board anymore. But I would.
Anne Maria Joan are either be available on April sixteenth for a day-long commitment?
I'm looking at my calendar.
Will there be?
Cookies, yes.
Just went over this, but.
Hope there'd be more than cookies. I hope there'd be two meals.
Similar to. Sorry, never mind.
No, it's okay.
There there will be a, when you have your finalists, there will be a similar talk about Q and A like there was last night.
Yeah, that will be the parent.
School committee members can be involved in that regard, too, but this is the search part, right?
Hundred percent. And if if a committee member cannot be part of the search, I mean, one of the big reasons we wanted you for the director of student service search is obviously your, you know, your appointment authority on that one. But if if nobody can make it to that one, it's it's okay.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at.
I can do it.
Okay, Anne Marie? Okay, I can do it.
Thank you, Chair. Ms. Lola? Just a quick question. I know we talked about this briefly the other day, but May first is one of the info sessions for town meeting. I'm just worried a little bit it may impact some people if you wanted to get both events, but I think you looked at the schedules and that was the only option.
It was really tricky to find anything in the evening that actually worked, really, because you have the candidates coming in back to back to back. You don't want to have too long of a time between the last candidate in the evening forum, and then when you're trying to do that.
The info sessions are usually, it's recorded, too, so I feel like people can access that. They don't think they miss it.
That's true.
And sometimes there's two, like, there's more than one.
Well, there's three nights, but they're each different topics. That's how it's going to be. All right, any other questions or feedback on this process or job description at this time? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Lef.
And that's it, okay?
Okay, so back to budget. This will be brief, I think. As I had shared previously, we did go to the finance commission last Thursday. That went very, very well. I already told you what we learned, unfortunately, about health insurance going up by thirteen percent. So that's an additional two hundred to three hundred thousand dollars that the town is going to have to appropriate free cash to use. We met as the budget subcommittee on Monday, reviewed the information that you had in your packet tonight, and then are just figuring out steps forward. So a couple of things that Mr. Mannion and and Mr. Lef are going to continue to work on and bring back to the school committee in April or May. They are looking at our facilities rental policy and the fees. That's something we have to do every year, so that'll be coming back to us. Keeping their eye on school lunch funding with everything going on at the federal level. Looking at the late fee for transportation. Um, looking at the late fee for transportation, um, and I think this is going to be on next week's meeting, is that correct, March 26th?
The which one?
Um, the transportation late fee and the process, or did you want to wait until April 9th for that one?
It's up to you. I wrote it down on my iPad, I don't have it.
Yeah, it was, it was either or, I wasn't sure where we ended at the meeting, if, if, I was trying to know, you said it was.
We just need to know before May 1st.
May 1st, so April 9th.
So, April 9th would be okay, as long as we have time to deliver it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and then, um, Sean is working with, um, other administrators reviewing the financial waiver process, which is something we've talked about multiple times as needing to be looked at for activities and athletics. Um, we will have the share cost allocation agreement that we always review and approve. Um, that'll come to us at one of our May meetings. Um, and then, one of the goals for the Budget Subcommittee, as you know, is to create a Budget Subcommittee handbook. Um, so I am going to get that started, um, throughout the next month, and then we will look at it as a Subcommittee at the end of April, um, and then bring it back to the full school committee in May. Um, just looking at my notes, um, another thing that, um, we will start to tackle in late May, early June, is a five-year outlook, um, for budget projections. Um, that way we are really forward-thinking. Um, one thing you should know that came out of the Finance Commission meeting that isn't the best news, they did ask us, as we start to look at FY '27, that we build the budget on the assumption that no free cash will be infused. That is roughly, how much free cash, 2 million right now? Is that right, that we put in our budget?
For, for our budget?
For FY '26.
Well, whatever portion, whatever portion of the 8 million they're using would be ours.
Yeah. I'm just trying to think what that means for FY '27, how much money we would be looking at for moving from our budget.
I mean, if we're 60 or 70% of the town, we're talking about a lot.
Yep.
It's insane.
So, more like 4 million?
Yeah. Probably more like, probably more 4, 440 million.
Okay. So, as we continue to figure out FY '26, um, you know, it's really important to me to help the community understand what then comes next. And, um, FY '27, what the FinCom had said is they would like us to look at building that budget without the expectation of any free cash going into it.
Teresa, could I request that you, with the town partners, inform us when that has ever been done in the history of this town?
No free cash?
Yeah.
That is a great question.
Thank you.
I can try to get that answer.
Yeah, see if we can find that answer.
Um, and then, let's see, uh, we do have that town meeting info session, we are going to try to go as a school department on April 28th. Um, and then, there is a motions meeting on May 5th, and then town meeting starts the week after that. Um, is there anything else, Emery, or Sean, or Tim, you wanted to add it, just add about our Budget Subcommittee work at this time?
I don't think that wasn't already shared earlier today with the calendar and schedule, schedule.
Okay. So, moving along, um, into old business, we have three items under old business. The first is a Middle School Building Committee update. Um, just so you know what is in the packet, um, we put the material that we had at our last Middle School Building Committee meeting in our packet, and then I also added the information that we got from Jeff O'Neil around the questions that we have been having with the investment and the surplus bonds, bonds, excuse me, around the project. Um, David, do you want to start off with how our last Middle School Building Committee meeting went?
Yeah, the, the first thing I want to touch on though is I had sent Tim an email, and I know I had let you guys know, um, and he had emailed our lawyer, and again, assuming positive intentions, I, I think in the meeting, it was two meetings ago, when I had asked about that, I think sometimes we have people that are very in the weeds that don't know sort of how to speak the language of average person that's not in the weeds.
Uh huh.
But essentially what the lawyer said was, you know, yes, it belongs to the town, and they're restricted, so anything that's left goes back into the town's general funds. But as I had asked, and, and an answer really wasn't given in that meeting, was, you know, I said, okay, well, my assumption is as a legislative body of town meeting, that if that money is returned, then a simple, you know, warrant and vote of that warrant could then, you know, redistribute those funds, um, which seems to be, you know, it would go, but you would have to have some sort of, you know, um, as I look at that, you know, like, warrants there, which is, I think, I think important, and I was going to ask you guys, I, I think it's something that we really need to consider, because I think there is going to be, you know, more than a couple million dollars left on this project. And I think that, you know, one of the things that town, I, I applaud them for is they have created quite a few, um, and I'm sorry that this is sort of inside, but they have created quite a few either revolving funds or looking to plan financially. I, I think that that lines up really nicely, that if you were to create some sort of like, you know, revolving fund for joint facilities, um, you know, and with the input of the facility staff, some of that stuff, that would be something that's important. Um, and I also will continue to advocate that, you know, and here tonight, talking about this, when you have five elementary schools, it's hard to do this, that I think we should consider going back into the MSBA with some of that money, for whether that's feasibility or, or whatever that may be. But that can be a conversation for a different day, but I just wanted to put that out there.
Before you want to, let me just say, I think Emery has a question.
Yeah.
Oh, you're muted, Emery.
Muted!
I took my hand down and didn't unmute. Um, I said, I was going to say, I think, David, I just wanted to follow up, because I think one of the things you're asking, and we actually asked this, we spoke very specifically about this at Budget Sub, and I actually followed up my hand as well, and then I went to Jess, you know, the memo, and we left my lawyer's, and I think that, um, the thing to keep in mind is the money that's going to be left over from the, um, the bond note that we have, there are very specific rules around it, it can't just go into a revolving fund. So, it's that, that piece, if you're talking about the money that's left over, you can only use it on a project that would be, you would borrow for an equal amount of time as the project that it was taken out for in the first place, or you can use it to, to basically pay down the debt exclusion. Um, so that piece, I don't think we could put it into any kind of revolving fund, it does take a vote town meeting um, to redistribute those funds, but it has to be very specifically used for a capital expense that is, that you would borrow. So, it, so I think that's the trick, it's like, I, I understand where you're coming from, and I don't necessarily disagree. Um, I think that, you know, we, we don't have an actual project to put it into and say, you know, and we can't put it into a revolving fund that's going to potentially put us back at the MSBA, is all.
Well, yeah, the MSBA, the MSBA is a, a wish thing, but I think that we should explore every option, because, you know, uh, again, that amount of money going back to the, to a town of about 35,000 people, whatever, resident, if, if you're doing that by that, it's, it's pennies that you're returning to the town when you have that much money.
I, yeah, great, and, and I just wanted to, I just wanted to follow up with that, because I, I did do a little bit of, um, checking in as well, uh, because I wanted to make sure I have 100% understood that, you know, these funds are completely separate from the, um, the, you know, the bond, um, proceeds, the interest proceeds that we were getting, which does just go with free cash. That is something that just goes to free cash and gets spent with free cash. These excess bond funds, which won't be released until the end of the project, um, we don't know what, exactly what that about is at this point. You're right, it probably is going to be a couple of million, but that has, it's that, yeah, that ends up getting very specifically spent and allocated by town meeting into a capital project that we would borrow for anyway. I think at that time, it is a really good conversation about where those funds go, um, and what happens to them, but I just wanted to, I think, I think it actually was answered, I think it just was like, I had to think a little bit myself to kind of be able to find you the right exact answer, and I even asked a lot of questions at Budget Sub, and Sean, I, um, you know, Tim, kind of just in, in, and, um, we were all kind of putting our heads together and trying to like, figure it all out, what are proceeds, what are, you know, what's the excess at the end, and what does that all mean, what are the definitions, and how does it fit this memo, and how does it fit the lawyer's, you know, um, definition, and I think we do have the answers.
Yeah, and Mr. Luff did pull up the memo that we got from Jeff, there's additional material as well, but Mr. Manion, did you want to add?
I just wanted, I, and I don't know about this, but could it also be used on a school capital project? I've, I've heard the idea of maybe like the Willet Roof, which is in dire need of repair. That, that roof will probably cost between 1 and 2 million dollars. Um, if surplus funds from Coakley could be used, not necessarily on another large-scale capital project, but some, you know, a roof project.
Something similar.
That could be, that could be expedient, because the roof definitely needs to be done at, at Willet.
Well, isn't that where it has to be?
The first bullet point there, I'm sorry, I, the first bullet point there, that was, was kind of a thing, it's any term, maybe appropriate refers to lasbarn for equal or greater to the original bond. So, 25 years is the original bond, so it has to be something that we would borrow over 25 years for, and I don't think we borrow over 25 years for a roof.
I think the other part is the Willet Roof is something that's falling apart pretty quickly, I'm not sure when it's going to be on capital, but probably by the time this project's over, it'll be duly.
Well, regardless, we should continue to push, because.
Yeah, no. But before, before you go into the meeting, since you did bring, bring up this, is there any other questions in the committee on the information that we put in the packet from Jeff on these two topic areas, the surplus bonds, proceeds, and investment income?
No, I, I helped clarify, I thought.
Okay.
I agree with David, keep asking.
Um, so just a couple of updates, uh, for future meetings, and we need to talk about this. Um, just because I have a couple conflicts, we can do that offside, uh, offline. Uh, April 14th, there'll be an onsite walkthrough at 4:00, meeting at 5:00 PM. So, again, as always, if there's anyone a part of the school committee and/or, um, administration that wants to stop by and do that, that's great. Um, 5:12, um, that will be the Savage Center here, and then 6:09, um, that is June, um, that'll be at the Savage Center. Um, those last two will be at 4:30. As for the actual meeting, um, just a couple of updates. Uh, again, we had, um, a visitor, and they talked about, um, possibly, um, with some of the money that's on the project for the walking paths that are along like, behind the new school, there's the roadway, there's, um, an elevated, um, like retaining wall, but, um, just sort of using maybe some of that money for paths, um, sort of around the fields. You know, I guess that, as this project was getting started, REC obviously was involved, and there was some talk of that, but because the site was going to be so moved and adjusted, they didn't want to invest to then have to take something off of that. So, that was, um, a large, um, part of that.
Well, it's the, it's the track, so the track that went around the football field, because the Coakley project comes so close to the field and on that angle, they had to remove some of the track. Which was something we talked about back in 2020.
Yeah.
Um, and then they were planning to have it go kind of like, around the school and the sidewalk and rejoin the track, but some people from the community and the REC Center have raised concerns that they don't really like that design at this point in time, and asked for other designs to be looked at, correct?
Um, and along with that, we, um, specifically Teresa, had, had asked about sort of like, uh, an outdoor play space. Um, you know, that was something that was value engineered out, um, and to sort of value engineer back in, and we had talked about hardtop, you know, basketball hoops, um, and maybe possibly, there are sort of two areas. There's an area that's a little, a little sitting area with some benches, but this would be more of a recreation space, and we had asked, and, um, they were going to get back to us on, um, I think the Gaga Pit was another option, but, um, sort of look at that and get back to us on that.
Yeah, and Nissa Ellis, who is our project manager, she emailed me yesterday, I haven't had a chance to get her, get back to her, but, um, she was looking at the basketball hoop, the Gaga Pit, and then also other ideas for a sensory space.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't know if it's going to be on our April meeting or, or our May meeting, um, but I know it will be on one of them. And then, um, after our Middle School Building Committee meeting, I did check in with Emery, because I felt that, um, the project team should probably come back to the school committee and update the school committee on some decisions again, so that the full committee has a chance to ask questions. Um, so I'm going to reach back out to Allen Slater and, um, call him, and see if they can come in April or early May to give the full committee a presentation. No, I, I think that's, that's the major points.
Still on time.
Is there anything from your weekly Wednesday meetings that we should know?
Um, not at this time, at this time.
Okay. Any other questions or feedback from the committee that you want David and I to continue to take forward to those committee meetings? All right, so next topic is legislative advocacy. Um, I did finally get you two draft letters, apologies for the lateness of those. Um, they're in your packet. The first one is a state legislative letter that will look pretty similar to you, because I used a template that I wrote in the past and just updated the information. Worked on this with Jody, as I shared with you at the last meeting, Jody and I met with Senator Rush and Representative Rogers on the beginning of March. Um, I'll, I'll just quickly read the letter so people in the community know what we're talking about, and then we can, you know, edit and/or vote to, um, sign this and send it. Uh, so, "Dear Senator Rush and Representative Rogers, we are writing this letter unified as the NORD Public School School Committee and the NORD Teacher Association to ask for your support for our students. We thank you for meeting with Vice Chair Stewart and Union President Jody Smith on March 3rd, 2025. On February 28th, 2025, the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, Massachusetts Association of School Committees, and Massachusetts Association of School Business Officers released a joint statement on school district budget challenges. We are attaching this statement for your review. In this letter, they state, 'A disturbing trend has emerged in school districts throughout Massachusetts. As school committees, superintendents, and business officials grapple with budget proposals for the '25-'26 school year, more and more districts are projecting significant budget deficits. The simple reality is that in many communities, expenses are increasing at much higher rates than the revenue available to support them. NORD is amongst these communities that, due to outdated funding formulas and limited revenue sources, are struggling to fund the needs of our schools and students. We are writing now to document our request for your support around important issues. These are all issues, as you know, that we have been advocating for and discussing with you since 2022. First, please support a thorough review of Chapter 70 funding with the goal of rectifying the funding formula to properly account for inflation and to continue fully funding the Student Opportunity Act. It is essential that Chapter 70 increments continue to, like, be funded appropriately. Additionally, in the FY '26 Governor's Budget, Governor Healy is proposing that NORD will receive an increase of $1,103,545 in Chapter 70 funding. Please support this amount or more in your respective budgets. NORD students' needs continue to increase, and the Chapter 70 funding increase is justified and necessary to support our students. Currently, MPS has 58.3% of students who qualify as high needs, 40.4% of our students are low-income, 24.3% of our students have disabilities, and 16.6% of our students are English learners. Second, we encourage you to support proposed changes to special education circuit breaker. Currently, a circuit breaker provides 75% reimbursement for special education cases over $47,000 in cost. We are seeking that this be increased to 90% reimbursement. Additionally, currently, the threshold is roughly four times the average per pupil cost. We are seeking to lower this threshold to three times at $36,000. Full funding of the circuit breaker is critical in today's economy. As we previously discussed with you, NORD's numbers of students who are enrolled in out-of-district programs is increasing. Likewise, causes associated with special education transportation are also rapidly increasing. Therefore, we are advocating for a continued phase-in approach of special education transportation being incorporated into circuit breaker. Third, regarding special education reserve funds, there have been proposed bills the last two fiscal years that would permit schools to save up to 5% of their net school spending instead of the current 2% in a reserve fund. This will not require any additional funding sources, but rather will allow the districts to save and plan more efficiently for challenging situations. We ask you to sponsor bills this year on this topic. Fourth, we are asking for your support around the retention of Medicaid revenues. Currently, regional districts receive this money directly, but in Norwood and other districts, the municipality receives it. We believe that all school districts should receive and retain Medicaid and other reimbursements for sped services that are provided by the schools and covered by Medicaid, Mass Health, and Medicare. In NORD, these services have been significantly increasing. It is NORD public school staff who are providing the services to the students and who are also completing the paperwork and process for the reimbursement. Retention of Medicaid revenues within the school district will directly support the special education programming that MPS is mandated to provide. Lastly, we encourage you to advocate for more mental health funding for students, staff, and their families. Further related to this request is important to note that the changes made to General Law, Chapter 71, Section 37H and 3/4 around discipline and suspension has been an unfunded mandate on schools for the last two years. We request funding and resources to offer restorative justice practices, mental health support, and other alternative practices as dictated by the law. If you have any questions or would like more information about how our school district is currently impacted, we would be happy to find a time to meet and discuss. Thank you in advance for your support and advocacy.
Great job, excellent letter.
Thank you.
If we move forward. Great job. Excellent letter. If we move forward with it, I think we should post it on socials and the website. I know we can probably get people to attach and personalize these things and reach out. You know, remember this time last year, people were eager to affect some kind of advocacy on their own. So we should do those steps.
Is there any feedback, anything you want to edit it and or motion for us to approve it so we can sign it and send it?
I didn't, I, your amount that you used for the foundation, the forty seven thousand.
Is that an outdated number?
I might need to update that.
Okay.
If you're okay with it.
Yeah, if I'm wrong, please tell me. That was the last number I had from a couple of years ago.
Okay.
But yes, if you want to fact check my number, that would, that would be great.
What was that, the per student?
The special education circuit breaker. I'll just highlight that and then Sean and Tim, if, if there is a, you know, factual error, please fix it.
I would also share in the fourth bullet with Medicaid revenues.
Yeah.
That we can receive Medicaid revenues not for just special ed services, but also for nursing services, counseling services for general ed students as well.
So where would you like that added? Oh, reimbursement for sped nursing and what?
I would say sped nursing and counseling.
And counseling, okay. I made that change.
Those are the major ones.
Okay. Any other edits?
Motion to approve and submit.
With the edit that Sean's going to fact check me on.
With the edit that Sean's going to update you with.
And with the edit that I just typed from, from Tim. So I'll second that. Any further discussion? All in favor, have to vote individually. So Ann Marie?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. So five zero. Get that corrected and get that out. Thank you so much. And Jody, I know you have a board meeting in a couple of weeks, but hopefully you can sign with us before then. It's very similar to a letter we wrote before. Then the second letter is for some federal advocacy based on the Medicaid program. Mr. Luft gave me a template that he recently received at a conference, so I worked from that. So I'm thinking this goes to Senator Warren, Senator Markey and Representative Lynch. So this one's a little bit shorter, but I'll read it again. We are writing this letter as the Nord School Committee, Superintendent of Norwood Public Schools and the Nord Teachers Association. Our school district serves three thousand five hundred and ninety nine students and employs approximately eight hundred educators and staff. We are writing to share sincere opposition to a proposal under consideration through budget reconciliation to dismantle the school-based Medicaid program and jeopardize the health care of the nation's most vulnerable children we educate, students with disabilities and students in poverty. In Norwood Public Schools, fifty eight point three percent of our students are high needs, forty point four percent are low income and twenty four point three percent have disabilities. School-based Medicaid programs serve as the lifeline to children who can't access critical health care and health services outside of their school. Medicaid is the fourth largest federal funding stream for school district and recent federal efforts to expand school-based Medicare programs to pay for mental health personnel, school nurses and deliver other critical health care services have been an overwhelming success. In our district, we rely on Medicaid to help subsidize special education services to our students. Maybe we do some editing here, Tim. These physicians include occupational therapy, P T, speech and language pathologists and B C V As. If we were to lose Medicaid funding, we would need to find at least three hundred to four hundred thousand dollars in our operating budget in order to provide these mandated services. This would require reduction of staff and programs and other areas of our budget and general education. School districts receive seven point five billion dollars in Medicaid reimbursement per year and any cuts to the broader Medicaid program would reduce care for children with disabilities, undermine efforts to address the mental health crisis and exacerbate workforce shortages of school health providers. We urge you to reject any proposals that would cap or cut Medicaid funding. Thank you for considering our comments. We are happy to be a resource to you on federal education and funding issues. We welcome the opportunity to set up a meeting with you. And I know Mr. Luft is editing some things, which you can see, but other feedback?
I just have one question and it might be moot. But is there a term in the lex con people are using besides disabilities, like differently abled or something along those lines that would be appreciated or is it, are we, is that expected and?
I think at the federal level of disabilities, since it's part of I D E A is probably the right way to go just because that would be the language that they're using. I totally understand the.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So Tim is adding the same language, nurses, counselors.
So I said, in our district, we rely on Medicaid to help subsidize special education and other medically required services provided to our students.
Perfect.
These physicians include O T P T, speech and language, nurses, counselors and B C V As.
Okay. Are there any other edits that anybody would like to see made? Okay. So is there a motion to approve this letter?
So moved.
Thank you, David. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kate. So Joan?
Yes.
Thank you, Ann Marie.
Yes.
Thank you, Kate.
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. So five zero. So we'll want to get that on our letterhead and then one each to Senator Warren, Senator Markey, Representative Lynch. And then also Kate, I'm sure we could get this one.
Yeah, I was going to say, same with that, right?
At this time, are there any other legislative issues that the committee would like to look into and discuss at future meetings? So moving along, we have new business consent agenda. We have one to each.
I think you have the.
Oh, oh, my goodness.
Evaluation check in still.
I do. Sorry, I lied. And I asked for that to go in the agenda. So sorry. Okay. So Ann Marie asked me to start this discussion since I was in the room. So just to touch base on the superintendent evaluation process, since we are supposed to vote on Mr. Luft's evaluation next week. David and Kate, I know you've been working diligently on the process. Kate, could you just give us a quick update of where we are?
Yeah, yes, we are going to ask Mr. Luft to grant us an extension of sorts. And we're hoping to still make it to the next meeting. I think that's what we discussed. But we might have a little less time with it. So we're running a little late. What else did you want me to say?
So we had originally said that we would get the composite to Mr. Luft by tomorrow and then vote on it as a school committee next Wednesday. I think we're still trying to vote on it next Wednesday.
Still trying to vote on it, but I don't think we'll have it to him by tomorrow.
So when is it feasible or when are you requesting that we get it to you by Mr. Luft?
First of all, totally understand the complexity of trying to get everything done all these times. I think if, I don't feel like I was, something I would review over the weekend. So if I could have it for Monday, I think that would be great if that's possible, just a couple of days beforehand.
I think that makes sense. Is anybody thinking they can't, that would give, so if we could have everybody's individuals done by Friday? Then do you think David having the weekend to do the composite is a good for you?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So individuals will be completed by Friday on the six different forms that Kate, you already sent out. And then David, are you taking the lead on the composite? Okay. So then David will do the composite and get it to Tim by Monday.
Yep.
And then as a reminder, what needs to happen is Wednesday morning, we should ask Ann Marie Lisa, Lisa Luft, to work with Joe Kidd to get the composite on the website. And then at the same time, it gets sent to the school committee. So unfortunately, we cannot see the composite document until the day of our meeting. But it should be sent to us Wednesday morning, also put on the website. So if anybody in the community wants to read the composite and then on the twenty sixth is when we go through it and vote on it.
Do I need to send it to those people or do I give it to Ann Marie to not do?
Ann Marie, do you want David to just give it directly to Lisa or do you want to, well, actually she can't see it either.
She can't see it either.
No. So if you're, if you're taking. Yeah. If you're taking the ownership over the composite, then you would need to get it to Lisa. And then just as we all finish our individual evaluations, Mr. Luft had already sent out the, the broader D S E superintendent evaluation. But I did add in the packet the rubric, just as a reminder, it's the first link if you go in the folder. Uh, no, that, I think it's there.
That wasn't.
Oh, no, it's the, the twenty seven pager, not the forty one pager. Yeah, there you go.
The twenty seven pager.
Yep. If you go down a little further, next page, right there. So just as a reminder, we had agreed already on which indicators under each standard that we were going to evaluate Mr. Luft. And as we're evaluating and as we are determining if he is, if you go actually one more page, as we rate unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient or exemplary, this rubric is supposed to guide us all in how we rate him in each indicator. And then on the form that Kate sent out, there is an area to put our comments if you'd like. What D S E says in their guidance is that if you rate a superintendent unsatisfactory, needs improvement or exemplary, you should provide comment. If you rate as proficient, which is the expectation and the standard, you can, but you don't have to provide comment. So just consider that as you're finishing your individual evaluation. And then David, as you are then taking our individuals to make the composite, what we've done in the past, but I want to make sure.
What is the word collaborate, not collaborate, calibrate? So it's like if there are five of us in it when needs improvement, needs improvement, what, like proficient, 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 the proficient wins out.
The proficient wins out, but what you should indicate, if it, if it wasn't unanimous, just put. And then, and then what we'll do on Wednesday is through the discussion process, we'll have to vote as, as a group what the final rating is. So if we all say proficient, you can say all five members said proficient. But if it was, you know, three said one, one said another and another, that should just be recognized.
Great.
And then the other thing we've done in the past is that as you're writing the narrative, if two or more of us had a similar comment, then that goes in the narrative. But if only one person said something and it was really outside of what everyone else said, we wouldn't put it in the composite document. But what can happen next week is any of us can motion for things to be added in or taken out. But any other questions from anybody as we finish our individuals?
And you will just give me access if I can.
Yes, and I found this helpful just now.
Okay, I'm glad. It's complicated.
Yeah.
But thank you, Kate.
Having not watched through this process on the previous one, so thanks. Yes, I can give, I think, I think I can run the report and then give you access.
Okay, thank you for your work so far. David, thank you for your.
I apologize for the lateness and I, I thought it would be more streamlined and then it wasn't and then I was like, but anyway.
We're getting there.
Yeah, we're getting it done.
All right. Now we can move on to new business.
Okay, so we have a consent agenda, one donation from Bay State Textiles for the February rebate in the amount of four seventy six forty. So I appreciate a motion for your consent agenda.
Great. Is there a motion to accept that donation?
So moved.
Thank you, David. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kate. So Ann Marie?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. So that is accepted. Okay, so at this time we have school committee addenda. I'm sorry, Ann Marie, I see you. I don't see Joan, so that's why I'm starting with you. Ann Marie, do you have any addenda tonight?
Um, I have, okay, I always start with I have nothing, but it's such a, I'm oxymoron. I just want to thank everybody that came out for the budget hearing. I do obviously appreciate everybody that comes and comments on our process and actually has an interest in where we are going with our budgets as a town. And it actually validates all the work that Theresa and the administration are putting into the budget subcommittee. I don't like to feel it's for naught when nobody's paying attention. I wish sometimes that nobody was paying attention because it does make it a little easier, but that is not democracy and I would not like it. So I do, I do truly appreciate everybody that came out and thank you very much for your opinions and, and letting us know how you feel about what's, what, what is going on. But yeah, that's it.
Thank you, Ann Marie. Joan, do you have anything this evening?
I have no addenda this evening.
All right. Thank you, Joan. Kate?
Nothing.
David?
No.
I have just a couple of quick thoughts. Kate, you had asked at the last meeting when we were talking about world language, you said like, isn't it somewhere in our strategic plan? And I had said, not really, and then I reflected and it is embedded in our portrait of the graduate and our five Cs. So just another thing for all of us to consider this year and moving forward as we work on budgets and policies and school improvement plans and everything. You know, we have made a really intentional commitment to the five Cs, which is that we want every student in Norwood Public Schools from pre K through age twenty two to be collaborator, collaborators, creators, communicators, cultural thinkers and problem solvers and citizens. We've also made a commitment to the four As, academics, arts, athletics and activities. And in our vision statement in Norwood Public Schools, we have said that we want every student to be respectful, responsible, resilient, caring and confident. That we want all of our students to be able to communicate effectively, think critically, work independently and work collaboratively. And that we want our students to be culturally competent, global citizens and lifelong learners. So over the next couple of months, as we see our school improvement plans, as we start to embark on another one year strategic plan, as we start to think about F Y twenty seven budgetary wise, I would just encourage us all in the community, in the districts and on the committee to remember what we've already committed to. And if these are still our pillars, then this should guide our work. But that is all I have this evening. So we do need to go back into executive session for one agenda item. We need to finish our discussion, our strategy session in preparation for negotiations that we will be having soon with our superintendent. So we do need a motion to go back into executive session. We will only reconvene in open meeting for the purpose of adjournment.
Bless you.
Bless you, Kate.
So moved.
Thank you, Kate. Was there a second?
Second.
Thank you, David. So again, I do have to poll individually. Ann Marie?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. So at nine thirty two, we are going to move into executive session. We will be back next Wednesday, same place, same time. Have a great weekend, everybody.